Okay. Do we have the planning commissioners elevated? Kiaris Altman, Swisher, Crawford, Williams?
Hi, everyone. See if we have everyone yet. Looks like we're getting everyone up here.
No, she can be elevated maybe at the time of the panel. Chair Kiaris, we've got the panel. I think panel members for the Dark Sky Ordinance are getting elevated. But what we're wanting to make sure is the entire Planning Commission, who's here in attendance tonight, is visible and active. And then, Madam Chair, we'll have you open the Planning Commission meeting and take us through the agenda. So I think we're all set. So Chair Kiaris, and this is Peter Gatawski, the Deschutes County Community Development Director. I'll turn it over to you to open the meeting and recognize the planning commissioners who are in attendance this evening. Thank you.
Excellent. Thanks, Peter. So it is now 5:32 on February 10, 2022, and I will call the meeting to order. Our first item is actually public comment. So this is a work session this evening. And if there are members of the public here who are simply here to observe the work session, that would be excellent. But we will be open to brief comments or questions on those two agenda items that we have this evening when we get to those items. So for now, are there any public comments about items that are not on the agenda for this evening? And maybe if you're in the audience, there are attendees, you could raise your hand using the Zoom function if you would like to be elevated to a panelist to comment about something not on the agenda.
Chair Kiaris, this is Peter Gatawski. No one has elevated their hands, so we can move beyond public comment and begin the action items.
Excellent. Okay. So let's go to the first action item, which will be the Dark Sky's outdoor lighting panel discussion. I will turn it over to Tarek Rawlins, who will introduce the panelists.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Chair Kiaris and to the other commissioners there. And it looks like the Dark Sky's panelists have been elevated as well. So tonight is the first gathering of the Dark Sky panel. We've kind of summarized in your memo, there's a list of the individuals that have been convened this evening. They're largely in line with the descriptions of expertise that the commission had requested at our last meeting. So we have a county resident and property owner, some astronomers, representatives from the building community. There is a... And we probably have to do a quick head count here to make sure everyone is, in fact, here. But there's a representative from International Dark Skies Association. Peter Gatawski is going to represent the Code Compliance Department of the county. And then we have an electrical expert in the form of Russell Robertson from City of Bend. That, I believe, kind of fulfills the panelist positions that were requested by the commission. And at this time, it would be, at the discretion of the commission, how you'd like to commence that panel discussion, if you're going to allot certain time to each speaker or however else you'd like to format this evening's discussion.
Excellent. So there are a couple of questions that came up in our previous sessions. One of the questions that stood out is, we have gotten a good overview to start with. I'm sure we'd all like to hear more about this, about the importance of dark skies. But we also want to know what about the ordinance may not be working? Working great? Is it perfect the way it is? Or is there anything in there that maybe could be improved upon from the different perspectives that you're going to share tonight? Let's see. I imagine everyone's come prepared to speak on topics that are related to their specific expertise. So maybe we could, for lack of a better organization, maybe we could actually go down our list here in our agenda. And if each speaker could possibly give maybe about, you know, like a kind of anywhere from three to five minutes to start with of kind of an introductory offering of what you think might be important for us to be looking at with this ordinance, that would be excellent. I'd like to have plenty of time for questions, discussion, comments from the planning commissioners as well. And Commissioner Crawford, you are appearing very large on my screen, so I don't know if that means that you're indicating you'd like to speak or if you just happen to be very large on my screen right now. And I would say-
Sorry about that. I don't know what's going on.
No worries. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing anything.
I look regular-sized, me.
Excellent. Yeah. Okay, good. Let's see. So can we go ahead and start with Grant Tandy, Observatory Manager? And maybe we could hear a little bit from you about your perspectives and go from there.
Yeah, absolutely. First of all, thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I really appreciate it. We all kind of had presentations. Would it be okay to share screens? Is that okay?
That would be excellent. Yes.
Okay, sweet. Let me get this going here.
And I assume our technical committee can handle that. Oh, great. That's working.
Is that up?
Yep, that's working.
Okay, cool. Yeah, so we were all just going to share, you know, our perspective on how it each affects our expertise. And then after we all shared, go a little bit more in-depth to changes that we had in mind for specifics of the ordinance. And we'd also like to hear where you guys are coming from, ideas that you have as well. So let's get this up here. All right. So my name is Grant Tandy. I've been a Central Oregon resident my entire life. I grew up in Sisters. I went preschool through senior year in Sisters. I've been running the observatory that's connected to Worthy Brewing, which is operated by the Worthy Garden Club, a nonprofit. It's the nonprofit end of Worthy Brewing for the last five years. And prior to that, I worked for the Oregon Observatory. And I also have affiliations with International Dark Sky Association and NASA. So part of my program here in Bend, we have a big telescope, a research-grade telescope. And we have thousands of people, mostly the public, also schools, community groups, retirement homes. They come through every year to see what our telescope's about, see the objects that highlight why our skies are so important. And this is a picture of a school group that I had pre-pandemic, of course. There's no masks. But, you know, I just want to really highlight why this is such an important feature to Bend, you know? Anybody could go an hour or so out of their way to the Pine Mountain Observatory or the Oregon Observatory. But we're really reaching the unique demographic of people within the city limits that might not be willing or have the interest to go out of their way to experience a dark sky. So we're kind of bringing it to them. So the light pollution surrounding our observatory, as well as, you know, stuff that's bleeding in from rural Deschutes County, is really affecting us. So I just wanted to give kind of a broad overview of what we're dealing with here. This is the entire United States, the light pollution map. This was taken from data about 15 years ago. As you can see, the East Coast is just completely socked in. We live in a very unique location. It's right on the edge of the largest section of dark sky in the entire United States. So as you can see here, Bend, Burns, and Boise sort of surround this area. And as those city centers and rural areas surrounding the communities expand, that bubble of dark sky is going to get smaller and smaller. And so we have a really important opportunity here to preserve this region. There's local dark sky advocates that are working to make this area one of the largest certified dark sky sections on the entire planet. There's, of course, regions just as dark, but not so widely surrounded by population centers. You know, light pollution, it's obviously an inappropriate or excessive use of light. I just wanted to show this diagram. You know, glare is a big issue, light trespass. You know, these principles that we all know for the most part are important to keep in mind. I think light pollution as a whole is a relatively abstract concept for a lot of folks. And that's why we're seemingly always having to talk about it, because it's not as apparent as, you know, being able to smell air pollution or anything else like that. So color temperature is really big for astronomy. The reason that we have red lights in the observatory is we don't want to over-dilate our eyes with blue light, which is closer to daylight. And so we keep red lights. That's obviously on the extreme end of color temperature. But IDA recommends 2,700K or less. So 2,200 or 2,700K is a really good range. A little bit of blue light seems to go a long way. I've noticed that 2,700 to 3,000K is kind of a big jump. I can really notice the difference. And if you're driving along and you get glare and blue light in your eye, you're going to have a pupillary response where your eye is going to, you know, dilate. And you're not going to be able to see as well once you get past that light. So color temperature is a big aspect to changing lights over from standard fixtures or, you know, the high-pressure sodium to LED. To kind of summarize the impacts that we're talking about here, it's not just astronomical ecological energy waste, which I know the energy savings that we could collectively, you know, integrate with better fixtures is going to be huge for the county and, you know, cities individually. Plants, animals, you know, it's important to note that we evolved under millions of years of a certain day and night cycle, and that's been disrupted within the last 100 years. So pretty big changes have happened. Specific impacts on what I deal with that might not be so aware to the general public is the views that we see through telescopes are really diminished here in town. We still get good views of objects, but they're not nearly as good as the views that I've seen out at the Pine Mountain Observatory or the Oregon Observatory. Imagine just, you know, taking away the contrast of an object. You know, this glowing ring that you see here is called the Ring Nebula. And it's the expanded ring of gas. It's the remnant of a sun-like star that's actually ended its life cycle. And the picture on the left represents a light-polluted sky versus the picture on the right. And it's a pretty big difference, as you can see here. And it's not only just visual views that are going to be affected. If you're doing research, I know Reema Givitt is going to talk later. They're doing local research on asteroids. And it's going to be harder to see if you have light pollution, you know? It's going to be harder to take that data. So it's not just visual astronomy. It's also research and imaging. Here's just a quick picture of, we're obviously not advocating for power outages. But the picture on the left is a light-polluted sky. There's obviously a light there in the corner that is causing some significant glare. The picture on the right is ideally what we'd want to preserve, you know, the Milky Way that you can see really well. So I do notice that there are lights still on in the house. I wonder if they had a generator of some kind. But, you know, big difference that we can see here for these two lighting situations with the sky glow in the background. Here is some unshielded lighting that Kathy Flanagan captured in Tumalo. Tumalo is, of course, between Sisters and Bend. And so you would think that, you know, people moving here would move out there for the rural aesthetic. But, you know, we're clearly sort of overlighting that area. So I think, you know, there is work to be done outside of the city centers. That's a lot of light spilling up into those trees, as you can see there. This is a picture that I took from Pilot Butte. It's a little bit exaggerated because it's a long exposure. But this is a similar exposure that I would do capturing the Milky Way, which I'll show in the next slide. Looking west towards downtown, this is right along Greenwood Avenue. And so there was an inversion layer of clouds, and the light was shining up through it so you could still see the stars on top. And I think it really goes to show how much light we're dealing with as a collective here in Bend. And it's obviously growing each year. This is a picture that we took, I took outside of the city limits, further out towards, out into the Badlands. And, you know, just to encapsulate, you know, we're trying to, we want to preserve all of this for astrophotography, astrotourism. People come to this area to experience these skies. And we really need to figure out a way that we can protect it with this updating of the ordinance. Not only that, too, I don't think, I don't know if anyone had mentioned this previously, but the cultural heritage, you know? We live very close to Warm Springs, and there's indigenous people that have always lived on these lands. And it's important to preserve those skies for future generations. I think that's something important to point out. And as Carl Sagan said, "We are made of star stuff." So we have that connection to the stars. This is the kind of five principles we want to base the new ordinance off of. And we can send this over. I think we'll touch on this throughout each of our presentations. You know, useful lighting, targeted, lower light levels. I think it's really important to recognize that smart fixtures that could be dimmed as needed would be the way to go, controlled, and then color temperature. So we can obviously get, the ordinance is big. We can get into it a lot. But, yeah, anyway, that's my... Thank you.
Excellent presentation. Very well done. Let's see here. So my screen is now... Ah, there it is. I had obscured my document saying who's next. So the next person will be Bill Cowalick. This is the chairperson of the Oregon Chapter of the International Dark Skies Association. But I think before we transition to his presentation, it might be nice to see if any of the planning commissioners have any immediate questions here for Grant. And of course, we can have a longer discussion toward the end. But are there any immediate questions that feel like they should be best asked right now?
Chairman.
Commissioner Swisher.
Hi, this is Steve Swisher. And for the record, I'm retired school superintendent from the Sister School District, as well as being a planning commissioner. And I first wanted to comment, I really appreciate Grant as a former Sister student and resident and the incredible work he's done in this presentation tonight. And I think he just provided some extraordinarily important information. Another panelist, Reema Givitt, is a teacher at our high school who has been inspiring students in science, as well as the dark sky issues and astronomy for some time. Appreciate her being here tonight. And basically, my question to Grant is just a little bit more about what kind of educational processes are you personally involved with regarding the dark sky question and issues going on? Are you lobbying at federal, state level? Or what are you actually doing?
A lot of the programming that I do is public education and outreach. So we have an awesome outlet at the observatory where we have thousands of folks a year that come through. And I talk to those people every night about the issues surrounding viewing and the impacts that the light pollution has on us. And a lot of people come through and they tell me, you know, "We came to Bend to view the night sky, and we came to the observatory to see objects that we can't see elsewhere." And so getting into discussions like that, besides working with Bill, Bill has a whole network of what's called SQM meters. They measure light pollution around Central Oregon. He'll get more into that. But we're taking data at the observatory real time. Every five minutes, we take a reading. And then every couple of months, we collaborate all that data together to paint a broader picture of what's happening in our community so we can, you know, better protect it. Because, you know, the state and the feds obviously measure all other types of pollution. But light pollution is sort of one of those issues that's seemingly overlooked. So we're kind of boots-on-the-ground trying to make stuff happen.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Excellent. Does anyone else have a question that should be asked now rather than later? All right, let's move on to Bill Cowalick. I know we're here to hear your presentation as well.
Yeah, thanks, Jessica. But I think Susan did have her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Susan. Ooh. Can you, yes, sorry about that.
Thank you. Thanks, Bill. Yeah, my question for Grant, I remember Worthy, before, there were so many apartments right next door. And I think that was probably within the past five years since you've been there. Have you noticed a difference in your ability to show the dark sky since you have those new neighbors around? Is that really-
Yeah. I mean, there's definitely, that area's always been kind of bad just because there's so many kind of car lots and stuff over there. There's a lot of lights that are left on 24 hours a day. And they tend to be blue spectrum, too, so you can see the colors of the cars and all that. So it is an issue we've always dealt with. But those lights across the street in the apartment complexes are pretty bright as well. So it's just adding, it's one of those things that it's, if you already have light pollution, you add a little more. It does affect it, but it would be hard to tell, maybe looking at a galaxy, unless you doubled the light pollution, you know? So, but it all adds up, you know? It's one of those things that in five years, the continuation of that is compounded. And then we have an issue that's way bigger than before that how do you backtrack through all that? Thanks for your question.
Excellent. Okay. And now let's move on to Bill Cowalick, please.
Yeah, thank you all for having this panel discussion. So my background is an earth scientist. So I come at the issue of light pollution from, you know, a scientific point of view. And in particular, what I'd like to talk about are light pollution measurements that, as Grant mentioned, we've been taking, but also some additional data that we can share. So in fact, my PhD dissertation involved atmospheric correction for improving our ability to find ore deposits with satellite images. So I'm pretty familiar with this kind of data. And while I'm chairperson of the Oregon Chapter and we're involved across the state, I do live in Bend, which is my focus here with Deschutes County today. So this is, this presentation is about scientific measurements of light pollution here in Central Oregon, specifically Deschutes County. And so we have volunteers who've been taking measurements of light pollution at 10 locations in Deschutes County over the past few years, including at the HOB Observatory. And I'd like to show nighttime satellite images of Deschutes County, which tell us where the light is coming from. In fact, have some information about how the light has changed over time as well. Then by using those satellite images, we've contracted with a company that specializes in atmospheric modeling of light pollution. So we have some models of light pollution based on those satellite images specifically for Deschutes County to share. And this gets to the point of, you know, the ordinance is in, well, not only in the county, but in the city of Bend, which are, in our experience, minimally enforced. Okay, so this is a picture taken from Pine Mountain Observatory, you know, about 20 miles southeast of Bend, looking back to the northwest. And I show this because it's a pretty good example of sky glow, scattering of light coming up from each of the cities and coming, scattering back toward us, you know, 20 miles away at Pine Mountain. So each city has a light dome over it. And from Pine Mountain, we can see the stars above. But you can be sure that the people down in Bend and Redmond, Prinville, looking up can't see those stars. So it's, you know, a visual example of sky glow. And this picture was about a 13-second time exposure, you know, to bring out the stars and also brought out the sky glow. So first point here is, we do have light pollution meters running at these starred locations here in Deschutes County, 10 of them and several in adjacent counties. And so these are meters, as Grant said, operate continuously to take a reading of how bright or how dark the sky is every five minutes. And we analyze that data and use that to characterize the state of the sky directly overhead at each one of these starred locations. So that information is useful for a number of reasons. A main one is to use it to characterize places that want to become recognized or certified as a dark sky place. And we have two of those. The first one was Sun River at the Oregon Observatory down here. And the second one is Prinville Reservoir State Park. And I might point out that folks up at Black Butte Ranch, where they've installed two of these meters and provide us with the data, are currently working to become a dark sky community. So this is the data that we get from the meters inside Deschutes County. And the vertical scale over here is the value that the meter records. Bigger numbers represent a darker sky. Smaller numbers, you know, it's an astronomy thing, smaller numbers are brighter. So here we have, our brightest measurements so far are actually at the HOB Observatory, you know, which is on 20th, Highway 20, a little bit east of Bend Center. If we go to Aubrey Butte, it's a little bit darker. Tethro is darker yet. Sisters Town East, Sisters High School, everything organized in by increasing darkness out to Black Butte Ranch and Pine Mountain. And it turns out this scale is logarithmic. So the HOB Observatory over here is about six or seven times brighter than at Pine Mountain. The sky overhead is that much brighter. So at Pine Mountain, we have almost a pristine sky because it turns out that 22 down here on this scale is about as dark as you can get. That's kind of a natural sky. So these are measurements that tell us about variation of sky glow directly overhead at different places around the county. And we're doing this not only in the county in Central Oregon, but across Oregon. We now have about 35 of these meters running. We just installed three more over in Eugene a couple of weekends ago. Okay, so going ahead, the other thing I wanted to talk about are nighttime satellite pictures of Deschutes County. So this is an annual average nighttime image from the year 2012, which was the first year that this NASA satellite called VIIRS started taking nighttime images. And it's still doing it to this, actually, there's two satellites. But this is the average from the year 2012. So bright spots are lit up. That's Bend, you know, Redmond, Sisters, you know, Sun River, and down toward La Pine. So you look at this and you might think, oh, that's just areas of incorporated, you know, towns. But if we superimpose in the next slide the urban growth boundaries on top of this image, we see that a lot of it is in the incorporated areas. But quite a lot of it is also outside the incorporated areas, which is, you know, why we're talking to the Deschutes County Planning Commission tonight, this kind of thing. Okay, so if we jump ahead eight years, when we have the next, well, the- Okay, so if we jump ahead eight years when we have the next, well, the last annual average image, the next slide shows the change. So this is the 2020 annual average nighttime image. And these, by the way, were taken between 1:30 AM and 2:30 AM, so it's now like middle of the night. If we go back to 2012, you can see what it was like then. And if we had earlier images, which, you know, really don't exist, we'd see, you know, far fewer spots here. Anyway, if we jump ahead to, to the data we have at 2020, we have that. Okay, so one thing we can do is we can take these satellite images from 2012 and 2020, we send them to a contractor, one contractor IDA, which was able to then generate models of sky glow. And this is the model of sky glow for Deschutes County based on the 2012 satellite data. And the company that does this is called Night Sky Metrics, and they're, you know, specialists in this field. So this map is a, something called, it's an all-sky average light pollution ratio. And here's a contour labeled 2. That means that everything on that contour is, uh, at least two times brighter than a natural sky. This happens to be Bend. And the numbers get up, you know, pretty high inside there, 510. And, you know, Grant's HOB Observatory is over in here somewhere. Another contour is useful here, and this one is just .25. And this is generally accepted as the ratio value beyond which we have good night sky outside of that. Whereas inside between 2.0 and .25, we call that threatened night sky. And inside, you know, we could label it ruined night sky, the area around Bend and Redmond here. Now, if we jump ahead to the 2020 situation, we have this picture. And you may have noticed in that change, we go back to 2012, 2012 and jumping ahead, everything expanded in those eight years, which is consistent with the satellite picture we saw before, that had more light in 2020 compared to 2012. So now, uh, the next slide, to try to simplify things here, shows these contours from 2012 and 2020 on one picture superimposed on Google Earth. So here is, uh, you know, the yellow lines are from 2012, the red is from 2020. So our zone of ruined sky has increased. And in fact, our .25 line here, beyond which we consider it to be good sky, has gone out about four miles, which is about a half a mile a year over that eight-year period. So it's clear that the light pollution is increasing here in Central Oregon. And, you know, part of that is increase in population, but there are a couple of other big factors, which is, uh, general lack of concern about responsible outdoor lighting and also, uh, you know, the existing ordinances, which we have in Deschutes County from 94 and then Bend like 2003, have been, you know, minimally enforced. They're, you know, it's complaint-based. We understand the issue of people have a lot, a lot to do, but we're telling you the results of that situation of not being able to, or only having complaint-based enforcement. Okay, another thing, without dragging this on too long here, another piece of information we can get from these satellite pictures, you know, digital data actually, is to compare 2012 and 20 in a different way. So here we have the urban growth boundaries superimposed. And what we can do is look at, you know, how much energy in light, radiance, if you will, Bend was putting out in 2012 and how much there, Bend was putting out in 2020. And for each one of these incorporated areas, Sisters, Redmond, Le Pine, and I also threw in Sun River here because, you know, we know about Sun River as the first dark sky place recognized in, uh, in Oregon. What's the situation there between 2012 and 2020? Okay, so a lot of words, and now the table that summarizes all this is the next slide. So I won't talk about all these numbers, but the key thing is how much upward light did we have in 2012 and 2020 and how much change did we have? Okay, so these are the places. So at Bend, 2012, you know, a satellite in the urban growth boundary measured this. In 2020, it measured a bigger number, which was that much higher. And so for each one of these areas from the GIS, you know, production, we have how much, uh, uh, light was measured at each time, and then we can subtract the two and we get these numbers over here. And then importantly, um, you know, I showed you that first picture taken from Pine Mountain, you saw that, you know, light coming up. So my first impression was, oh, that's probably mostly from, you know, Bend and Redmond. And in fact, that's true. 66, you know, 67% or so of it is from Bend and Redmond, a little bit from Le Pine and Sisters, 28% from unincorporated county. Now, so that sounds like maybe the problem is not with the county. However, if you look at it a little more closely, you realize that, uh, what's the percent of total change between 2012 and 2020, you know, this number, which is the sum of all those changes here, uh, gives you, you know, Bend increased, uh, what, sorry, Bend, Bend's, uh, part of that total change was 24%, but the county's part was 53%. That's because while there are not a lot of, uh, bright lights out in, you know, unincorporated Deschutes County, there are a lot of, a lot of, you know, you know, lights that the satellite can see, which are not, you know, bright like downtown Bend or Redmond. Okay, and another piece of information here is that if you look at Sun River, you find that between 2012 and 20, Sun River actually got darker. And that, uh, which is, you know, it's the first time I've seen that sort of thing. So yay for Sun River. Okay, and here's another, the last column, which is, you know, informative. This is a percent of change of radiance in each area between those two years. So in other words, what we're doing is taking, uh, the difference here, which for Bend is 647, and we're, uh, that's 13% of the, of the original, right? So each one of these numbers here is a percentage of that change of the original. And it's a little bit shocking here that, you know, Sisters is 50% brighter, uh, now than it was in 2012, well, in 2020, when I say now, 2020. And the county is 74% brighter. That's because, look here, the county in, uh, 2012 was 1921, and in 2020, it's 3348 difference. So this number divided by the beginning is 74%. And, you know, Sun River's gone down 11%. Okay, so that's, all that came from, you know, two annual satellite images, which is an eye-opener, you know, not only for me, but hopefully for the rest of you. And then, you know, something we haven't done, but it's quite possible, is that given the satellite image, uh, from 2020, we can, you know, count the number of pixels, try to figure out how many lights were on in each pixel to give that amount of energy measured by the satellite. And we could come up with, you know, the, uh, energy used and estimate the, you know, carbon dioxide equivalent footprint, which is, you know, something a lot of people are interested in going forward. Okay, so, uh, in summary, you know, we have those light pollution measurements at 10 locations and we measure our night sky quality, both the good and the bad. Uh, the night satellite images show a significant increase in, you know, visible night lights in the county outside of the incorporated cities. Uh, sky glow models show that the satellite images confirm that the light pollution grew noticeably worse across those eight years. And the zone of threatened night sky in Deschutes County expanded outward by half a mile per year over that time change, time range. Unincorporated Deschutes County accounted for 20, maybe only 28% of the upward lighting 2020, but 53% of the increase over those eight years. And then unincorporated Deschutes County increased in upward light by 74% from those two years. Okay, so it's a lot of numbers, the general sense is we have, uh, you know, detailed measurements which, that show that light pollution, uh, is bad and getting worse here. And as Grant showed this slide, it's, you know, principles for responsible outdoor lighting put together by the Illuminating Engineering Society and the International Dark Sky Association. So those are, that's sort of the framework in which we'd like to, you know, modify the, the lighting ordinance that we have here and, you know, arrange somehow to get it enforced. All right, so I have a bunch of slides that might answer questions, but otherwise, I'm, thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Another excellent presentation. Um, I'll ask the same question from before. Uh, do any of the commissioners have a question that should be asked now to clarify anything? Um, here with Bill Kowalik. I'll just flip through again to make sure I'm not missing anyone. Um, okay, I have a question. Is there a theory on why Sun River got darker? Do, does anyone know why that happened?
Uh, I, I suspect it's because they actually enforce their lighting ordinances along with other ordinances down there, uh, but, you know, I don't, I don't have any personal experience, other than I do go down there periodically to get data from their sky quality meter at the, at the observatory.
Uh, and do you, do you know specifically that they do enforce it carefully? Um, or is that, is that kind of a theory and you're not sure, but plausible?
Uh, it's a theory.
Okay.
Commissioner. Can I?
Yes, please.
Oh, can I just say that, um, I worked at the Oregon Observatory for three years and, uh, the whole, uh, a big importance to Sun River as a whole is keeping it as dark and natural as they can. So I know their HOA and, uh, their ordinances are pretty strictly followed, especially because the observatory is there and the nature center, and they want to preserve, uh, you know, the scenic flyway for the birds and everything too. So, um, as far as I know, it's, it's pretty strictly enforced, but.
That brings up a good point, that an HOA would have, um, an easier time enforcing that as part of all of the different things that are enforced, the kind of enforcement process.
And Commissioner Keres, this is Peter Gatawski. Uh, just to build off, to build off Grant's remarks, I did speak to James Lewis, who's the executive director for Sun River Homeowners Association. And they, you know, so there's a process for new development. Of course, they go through, uh, the community development department for building permits, but they also have a separate design review committee. And just as you noted, and as Grant noted as well, they have dedicated staff with, with, you know, that are tasked to look at design features, one of which is, is of course lighting. So you could think of it as a multi-tiered structure where, or system where building permits are coming through our department for structural, plumbing, mechanical, electrical, et cetera. And then the specific design review characteristics that are implemented through codes, covenants, and restrictions through the HOA is giving that community additional, uh, attention and oversight to ensure that design related to lighting is getting properly, uh, installed and implemented.
Okay, that's really useful information. Thank you, Peter. Commissioner.
I just want to add to Peter's comments. I am also the vice chair of the Tollgate Homeowners Association, and we have a group that has reached out to Sun River to look at what they are doing successfully or not because there's interest in Tollgate and improving our lighting issues. And basically, it reinforces what Peter said about the new constructions, but basically the main thing they came away with was the fact that they actually enforce the ordinances there.
Excellent. Okay, great. Um, any, would anyone else like to, um, comment or ask a specific question before we move on? Okay, I'll check one more time. Okay, great. Um, let's move on. Um, so we have Ron Thorkilson of Deschutes County, uh, who is a Deschutes County property owner and resident, um, just like some of us on the planning commission, so very much looking forward to, um, your presentation as well.
Okay, thank you. Where, uh, let's see, share screen, here we go. Where, uh, I don't see my screen. What did I do wrong? Oh, wait. Uh, you're, all right, let's try again. I, uh, have any, anybody have any, uh, recommendations? Uh, hitting the share screen here.
Yes, if anyone does have any recommendations, who knows better about, um, computer software than I do, please unmute yourself and make a suggestion.
Ron, do you have the, um, the correct screen highlighted? When you say share screen, you need to select your presentation. It'll give you some options and then make sure that your presentation is selected or outlined in blue.
Yeah, outlined in blue.
Yeah, so when you click share screen, you'll see some different windows pop up that you already have open.
Yeah.
And you select the one that shows your presentation. Or you can select whole comput, the, the one on the top left shows all of your, everything that you're showing on your screen.
And if you do show the, show everything, you would just then go to the bottom of your monitor and click your, uh, photo or, uh, whatever you're using for your, uh, display for your slideshow. If you select everything to be shared, then just go to the bottom of your screen and click where your slideshow is.
There it is. But can you see this?
We cannot see it.
You cannot see it? Okay, okay, okay.
Even but not the presentation. And before, when you had clicked, um, shared screen at the beginning, we could see the, um, picture of your computer screen. Um, and I think, uh, what Commissioner Williams may have been saying is do that again and then select your, um, presentation program at the bottom of your screen.
Well, I did not expect this, sorry.
No, no worries. And I'll, I'll take you out of the spotlight for a second and say, um, that, uh, so far the presentations have been great and, um, I am convinced personally that, um, we do have our dark skies threatened. Um, and I'm very curious to hear as we go, um, and, and it may not be tonight, um, if, if we can fit it in tonight, that would be excellent, but we also have the opportunity to have another panel in the future. But I'm very much looking forward to everyone's suggestions about what specific parts of the ordinance could be modified if we wanted to make that recommendation to the board. Things like, we've been talking a little bit about, um, the, uh, the, the light temperature or, um, color for those of us Westman layer. I also am curious about what everyone thinks about the, uh, 20-minute motion sensor exception, if people think that it's okay to have that in there, if that should be modified. So, um, again, I'm looking forward to hearing what you guys think about some of those specifics. Uh, let's see, where did Ron go here? Oh, no. Is he? Oh, Ron's still here.
I'm back. I'm back.
Yay. And another option you have too is speaking from the heart and letting us know what your experience has been like as a homeowner, um.
Yeah, I was gonna do that too.
Excellent.
Okay, so I'm, I, I see everybody again.
Yeah.
I'm gonna clip share screen. Oh, 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 maybe. Oh, 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 maybe...
Ooh, we can see it.
Can, huh?
Yes, saving our dark skies. Yes, with a beautiful picture in the background.
Okay, okay. All right, well then, maybe I'm ready. So, let's see here. Okay, I'm Ron Thorckelson, and I'm on the, I was invited to participate on this panel as a homeowner and resident of Deschutes County. But I'm going, in my presentation, I'm going to try to explain what's important to me with regards to dark sky. So I've entitled my talk, Saving Our Dark Skies. And so when I say that, saving our skies from what? And specifically, it's saving, trying to save our dark skies from increasing levels of light pollution due to excessively bright and unshielded lighting. And some examples you can see here in this picture. And similar examples show up in this picture. There's no reason that it should be like this. It's just, there's just, there's better ways to do it. So I am currently the chair of the Sisters Astronomy Club, and we operate under a committee of the Sisters Park and Recreation District. We hold monthly meetings, and during the spring and summer months, we put on public, what we call public star watches, where members of the club bring their telescopes out to the high school and invite the public to come by and take a look, and we show them what we can. And what we can show them is always brighter, they always get brighter images from darker skies. Or probably, the more light pollution that we have to look through, the dimmer the object is, we're trying to show. We also conduct star parties for the Deschutes Land Trust at Rim Rock Ranch. Rim Rock Ranch is located to the northeast of Sisters. And here is a photo taken from Rim Rock Ranch in July of 2020, looking south. You can see the Milky Way, and you know, and the skies are decent. But there on the horizon, just below the teapot, is a glow from the Ben Light Dome. And that has continued to get, to grow, and if something isn't done, you know, that, the portion of the sky that you see might be much harder to see in future years. There's another picture taken from Rim Rock Ranch, September 2015, looking north. And those lights are the result of what Madras is doing, and maybe the surrounding communities around Madras. So while the skies, while the skies are pretty good now, they won't always be that way unless there's some changes made. And we also, the club also puts on public viewing during special events, such as the supernova that took place in the galaxy M82 in January of 2013. The image on the right, or excuse me, on the left, has an arrow pointing to the area in the galaxy before the supernova showed up. The image on the right, the arrow is pointing to that same area, showing, obviously showing the supernova. And I was at this event, and everybody I talked to, almost everybody, said that this was the first supernova they had ever seen in their life. And if the skies are much brighter than this in the future, we won't be able to do this. We won't be able to see the stuff like this. So I, we've got to draw the, draw the line somewhere and make this better. So, enter the International Dark Sky Association, and Grant and Bill have already talked about this, and so I'm not going to belabor it, but these are these five principles, again, of responsible outdoor lighting that are very important. And members of this panel believe that by helping to develop a more ecologically friendly code based on these five principles of responsible outdoor lighting that will be enforced, the spread of light pollution in Deschutes County can be slowed or even reversed. And the benefits, I've quickly listed here, it's healthier for humans and animals, there's a cost-saving by not throwing the light in the air and into space, and reducing glare, the glare of lights makes safer an environment. And preserving dark skies as a precious resource is another benefit. So, I implore the county commission to help us save our dark skies. And I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ron. That was a beautiful presentation. I'm glad that we got to see the photos. Does anyone have any specific questions right now? Yes, Commissioner Williams?
I don't have a question, but I did just write down that dark skies are a precious resource, and if people were to look at or to consider the dark skies as a resource, like we consider water a resource, land a resource, we might have more, more people on board.
Sure, I agree. How do we, how do we do that? I mean, education, I know. Most of the people I know and work with already know this. But you're right, we've got to get it out to a broader audience, I think. And I'm doing what I know how to do to help achieve that.
Yeah, it seems like so far, there have been three ideas presented that I've heard. One is education, so I know that all of you here today are involved in different ways of getting the word out to the public. Like Grant Candy said earlier, lots of, lots of opportunities for people coming through to be educated on dark skies. Everything that you just talked about with just the involvement of the community and having this be a really amazing experience with the star parties, getting together, it's community activity. And then there's the enforcement of the code itself, and then there's other modifications to the code that would make it even better so that there's even less lighting. Because there are definitely people out there who don't actually, who maybe are really interested in keeping their lighting in compliance, and they don't need to be enforced, or they're motivated, but they also need some instructions on exactly what type of lighting is disruptive. And so that's why it might be helpful to consider updating the ordinance so that the guidelines are the best that they can be, even if it doesn't get enforced 100% of the time.
Absolutely.
I'm hearing three different ideas there, but if anyone has additional categories of ideas to help, then that would be useful, too.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else want to comment before we move on? Yes, Bill Kowalak?
Yeah, just to maybe emphasize the comment about, from Commissioner Williams about, you know, precious resource. There's a financial angle here from Travel Oregon, who are quite interested in, as Grant pointed out, that large area southeast of here, the Oregon Outback. It's, you know, potentially the largest certified dark sky called Sanctuary in the world, and it's, you know, part of the biggest dark sky area here in, well, in the 48 states. The thing is, and Travel Oregon's very well aware of that, as are the, you know, visit Central Oregon people. So that's a, you know, that's a group that, you know, could be represented on this panel. And I could say a few words, but, you know, they're much more familiar with what their angle is.
Thank you, that's a good suggestion. So later this evening, we're gonna have a discussion about whether we will do another series of panels, and so that's something to think about as well for the commissioners. Okay, let's move on to Russell Robertson, building inspector, City of Bend.
So, I didn't really realize we were supposed to be having presentations put together for this, but my background is in electrical, came from electrical trade as an electrician, all the way up through into the inspection process, so I deal with a lot of the installation of these lights you guys are talking about, and I'm more than willing or happy to answer any questions you guys might have on that aspect, or if we do do another meeting, I, you know, could put something together, something you guys would be more interested in or have questions on.
I think there will be some questions. I know I have one, but I'm gonna give everyone else a chance first. Yes, Commissioner Swisher?
Yes, I think I heard you're electrical inspector, and in doing so in new construction, are you actively looking at, at that time, whether the house or the modifications that are going on are in compliance with dark sky? Is that one of the components, or is that something you don't deal with at that particular point of inspection?
That's not something that we've been dealing with at that particular time of the inspection.
Have, one follow-up. Have you been part of any complaint procedure where someone has filed a complaint about it, then you reviewed it?
No.
Okay.
Is there, is there any particular reason why it's not part of the inspection process? Is that just because it doesn't have to be, or is it, I don't, I have a very limited background on this.
Yeah, sure. So mostly what we're looking at is building safety. We come at it as a life safety aspect and minimum code requirements for electrical installations out of the National Electrical Code. So a lot of the things you're talking about, where I think would be probably more dealt with at local level, where it would be like HOAs and stuff like that, maybe not necessarily be a code requirement as far as installation requirement in the National Electric Code, but maybe a homeowners association or something requirement that we wouldn't be looking at.
Do you have any suggestions for if the home was not in an HOA? From your position, is there any other way that that could be? So when new lighting is getting installed, that the process of following whatever guidelines are in place is actually followed?
Probably more just through education. So, you know, even homeowners are allowed to replace light fixtures without a permit, so there'd be no reason for us to even go out there and look at it anyways, right? So I think a big part of it is just education and getting the word out and letting them know that if they are gonna replace a light fixture, it's gotta be replaced with one that would be within the county ordinance.
And is that education, like who do you see as the best deliverer of that information? Like, say, I'm gonna go replace my lighting, and I'm, and you're gonna come check out my house and make sure that it's safe, and I'm not gonna burn my house down. Would that be something that someone in your role would do, say, hey, by the way, you've got to put this type of lighting in if you want to be in compliance with the ordinance? Or do you see somebody else being a better fit for that role?
I guess it could be with us. I mean, by the time we would get out there, they would already have the light installed.
Right. I've already spent a few thousand dollars on my new lights, and you're like, um, just so you know. Yeah, okay, that's helpful.
Chair Keres, do you mind, this is Peter Gatawski. I just want to acknowledge Mr. Robinson's comments, that his remarks, I think, are quite standard or ubiquitous for local building departments or building divisions. There's, you know, the responsibilities are to look at the structural, electrical, mechanical, plumbing-related aspects of new developments, new dwellings. And there's significant expectations and demands, as you can imagine in our region, to turn out those permits as soon as possible. And so the staffs that you will see at the local level are focusing on implementing the building code. I think to your, and I may be getting ahead of myself since I'm number seven, but my remarks are just to recognize that Russell's remarks are standard for local governments, and that any critique or remarks should not be a reflection on how the City of Bend processes their building permits through their system. It's, local governments are obligated to apply those building codes, and we can certainly talk about, and the panel and others may have some strong recommendations, which is totally acceptable. I will just acknowledge that the system that we have in place locally, as lean as it is, is to really look at the structural integrity of the development, in Robert's example, you know, a single-family house.
Thanks, Peter. That's helpful to clarify, and also just to clarify, that was coming, my questions were coming from a very naive, uninformed place, rather than a sort of suggestive question sort of place. I just wanted to try to understand how that works, but you guys were both really clear, so I appreciate that. And I also noticed that Elise Wolf has her hand raised on the zoom. Is that intentional? Oh, and you're also muted, sorry. You can unmute.
There we go. I was just going to say, I was just looking at the county code, and, you know, there is a section in there that requires that it be installed in conformance with the building, electrical, and sign code. And that was something I have mentioned in my presentation, is that we need to perhaps look at how we can better create code synchrony and have that flagged at those, in those other departments. That's all.
Well, thank you. Yeah, okay.
And a question, if I may, just a question for the panel as we get there, because this is such a prominent topic, is are we seeing code violations? Are we seeing light pollution from new development? And because, you know, we have, in rural Deschutes County, of course, we have new development and development that's been here for decades. And so it would be interesting to hear over the course of the conversation tonight, or if a follow-up panel occurs, what kind of standards that we're seeing, shielding, lighting, you know, and whatnot. It'll be helpful for staffs understanding, and I think for the group at large, to know where these incidents are occurring, in what categories. That'd be really helpful.
Are there other questions here for Russ Robertson, specifically? Okay, cool. Thank you. Okay, cool. Thank you very much. Let's now go to Jerry Jones, the Senior Director of Land Development for Polish Homes. Do we have here?
Sorry, Chair Kears, this is Tarek Rawlings for the record. I don't, we were expecting Jerry Jones to show up in person, and we have not received him in, in the Barnes and Sawyer Room yet, so I don't know if he'll be available right at this moment.
We can come back to him if he does arrive.
And if there's a subsequent panel discussion, certainly I can inform Jerry to come back, or however the planning commission would prefer that to be handled.
Sure. Okay, great. So then instead, let's go to Rema Giveit. Is it Giveit or Giveo? A science teacher at Sisters High School, and also an amateur astronomer.
Thank you. Yeah, it's Rema Giveit. I've gotten that my whole life, though. It's nothing new for me. Yep.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So thank you for having me and allowing this opportunity. I'm really, really excited that we're visiting the ordinance now. I think it's a critical time as far as the growth of the county, and that we actually are kind of at one of those pivotal times where if we do it right, this could impact, you know, future generations well, far, for, for many decades, many generations, and that it's, it's a pretty neat opportunity for us to make some decisions that could set a standard for our area. And so thank you for having me here. I want to talk a little bit about why our efforts on updating this ordinance matter. My name's Rema Giveit. Like I said, I teach science at Sisters High School. I've been there since 2000. I'm also, I've also been living in Deschutes County since 1992 and was a Sisters High School graduate, so it's fun for me to have been here. I really love the stars. I also want to note that most of the photos that are shown in this presentation were taken by local photographers, such as this one by Chris Kristovich. So looking at why do we care? First of all, dark skies and just the ability to see the, the stars at night gives us a sense of place in the universe, which I think is really important to point out. It also helps us to, to connect with nature. And I, I believe that that's really important for people as well, as far as health and many other reasons. Another benefit that I want to speak directly to from my perspective as a teacher is having dark skies and the ability to see the stars here in Central Oregon is a huge benefit for education. It gives the students an opportunity to actively learn about what they see at night firsthand. We have vibrant astronomy programs in the Sisters and Bend schools with room to grow. There's also growing programs in the Redmond and Pryandell Schools. Different schools across Central Oregon are involved in citizen science and community engagement. I wanted just to speak to a couple of these. The first one is RECON, which is an acronym for a citizen science project that actually, it's run by a scientist in Boulder, Colorado, who is utilizing communities from Canada, and each of these dots here on this picture on the right, the map on the right, the different colored dots that are overlapping from up into Canada, all the way down to Mexico, represent a different community that's involved in this citizen science project. And it's specifically focusing on gaining information about asteroids. But this information is, has not been known before. And so I don't know if any of you were aware of the Lucy mission that just launched last October to understand more about asteroids. And a number of these communities have also been involved in that mission through this RECON network. So I wanted to zoom in to show, here are the map on the left, shows the different communities in Central Oregon that are participating in this project. So there's a community group in Madras, in Redmond, in Sisters that we're involved with at the high school in our local astronomy program. Bend has a community or a, a group that's working on this, as well as the Oregon Observatory, Sun River, and in Le Pine. So they're spaced out, and there's an incredible opportunity for networking as well as connection across the region for the students and citizen scientists that aren't, that are, you know, the general public that want to participate. Also, community science oriented, or citizen scientist oriented, is the sky quality meters that Bill Qualick referenced. We have one that the students at Sisters High School have been monitoring, and there's other ones around the region. And so the students are actively engaged in contributing this information. They also participate in giving, leading some of the community star parties. Our students write nugget articles for the Sisters Nugget, so they're engaged there in some community participation. Then we also have, you know, as far as the general public goes, the Pine Mountain Observatory, the Sun River Observatory, and as Grant was talking about, the Worthy Observatory. And it's fun for me to be working with Grant right now, because he actually was one of my first astronomy students at Sisters High School. Dark skies also provides a very important ecological value, both to wildlife and to vegetation. So I'll come back to this. It's also important for human health. I actually want to speak to ecological value just a little bit more. When a streetlight shines on a tree, for example, sometimes that light, if it's given over and over and over every night and not ever turned off, can actually affect the leaf drop rate of that tree. And so you, you'll see that trees under a streetlight might not lose their leaves as quickly as, say, a, a tree that's not lit up at night. And that can impact the health of the tree. And wildlife, there's key, so, so much data, and I think we'll probably hear more about that, I hope, from Elise later on, but looking at just the effect for migration, navigation, and animal health in general. So this is an important thing to look at as well. Human health is also impacted by dark skies. We have evolved to need darkness at night, and so we produce melatonin when we're sleeping. And there's many studies that show that with in increased darkness at night, we, we produce more melatonin and end up having a more restful sleep. Light pollution has been associated with causing sleep disorders, increasing risks of obesity, depression, diabetes, breast and prostate cancer. And I want to point out that these are health issues that we hear a lot about all the time, and recognizing that amounts of light pollution can play a part, and that maybe just by reducing the amount of light that our bodies see at night, that can help us be healthier. Responsible lighting at night helps reduce energy costs and emissions, and is actually safer. And I want to speak about the safety piece first. So if we look at these pictures here on the left, on the top picture, there's a light that's producing glare, and it draws our attention to it, hiding the fact that there is a person standing in the gate. If you cover up that light with your hand, or in this case, the person in the picture, it creates a shield there and lets us see the area that was intended to be lit, but doesn't draw our eyes to the light, and therefore lights up the man that's standing in the gate. The picture on the right shows lights that are shielded, and so you can see that the sidewalk is very well lit, and the, the way the lights are designed, the light's going down, not up into the sky. Light pollution also produces a significant amount of energy waste. And so simply by using effective lighting, we can save on the scale of the country billions of dollars a year. This picture on the left shows a picture in Sisters that is, you know, demonstrating energy that's being lost up into the sky, causing energy waste. So this map shows the, you know, satellite view of the United States, showing how much light pollution there's been since the late teen 50s to what's projected to come, you know, as, as early as 2025. And I want to point this out, that if you look here, where my arrow is going, that is the Willamette Valley, and looking at how much darkness there is in the 50s here in Central Oregon. And talking to a very good friend who was saying that, growing up in Portland in the 50s, looking at the stars looked kind of similar to what we now have here in Central Oregon. And as we jump forward into 2025, you can see here is Central Oregon, and quite a bit lighter than it used to be, but we still have this big area of darkness just to the east of us. And so if we zoom in to Oregon, we can see here's Sisters and the green, and the, the warmer the color, the closer to red the color is, the more light pollution there is. And this is a map taken from satellite imagery from 2020, from 2015. Here's Bend and the surrounding area, and you can notice, again, this tremendous resource of darkness, really pristine darkness to the southeast that we influence by our own light. So there's this, you know, area around it, this buffer that, as we light up more area, then it pushes into this other area. And Boise over here and Nampa on the right are also kind of pushing in from the other side. And so not only, reducing light pollution not only helps our own area, but it will also help protect the really pristine area to the east. So some of, actually, I'm going to go back here and just real quick, look at, well, what causes, and I think this, that we're probably aware of this, but I just want to reiterate it, what causes light pollution. Unshielded lights, really important. Blue and white lights, so the, the cooler colors, the higher numbers on the Kelvin scale. Excessive lighting, so having more than, than needed. And then inappropriate lighting, lighting that isn't targeted and directed to where we actually want to light. And these cause light trespass, glare, and sky glow. So these are a couple of pictures taken by Kathy Flanagan as well. These, it's a horse barn outside of Tamalo, and a greenhouse near Tamalo. And so these speak to the, just looking at, you know, specifically as far as the code goes, making sure greenhouses are shielded, that's one way, or blacked out at night, one way we can help prevent that light trespass, glare, and sky glow on the barn as well. Turning lights off at night if possible, or being on motion sensor, and then having those lights targeted pointing down would, would be really helpful to prevent that light pollution. So just reiterating, what do we want to make sure our code has in it, and then also enforces? First of all, we want to direct the light down. So that first picture, it's not down at all. The second picture shows it's, it's shielded and pointing where we want to light it up. Next thing is, is having warm color. The warmer the color, the easier it is on our night vision. And also, and that's why, you know, we have red lights at night on our taillights. It helps prevent our night vision from being infected. And so this is also, it goes for streetlights or any other kind of lighting. The warmer it is, the easier it is on our night vision. Dimming the lights as much as we can is also really important just for, you know, preventing energy waste, having it be softer on our eyes, and actually sometimes more effective, and better for preventing light pollution. And then timing it, controlling it, turning the lights off whenever possible. This picture you've seen before, this is again from International Dark Skies Association in partnership with Illuminating Engineering Society. And I'm proposing that we really, you know, if we, if there's one thing that our code has, it's these five targeted things. Is the light useful? Is it targeted? Are there low light levels? Can we make them as dim as possible? Can we control them or turn them off, have them be on dimmers or motion sensors, and then the warm color? And when we talk about education of our, you know, citizens, this might be a way to help educate and, and raise awareness about what can be done. I want to quickly bring up, in 2015, I worked with my students, and they conducted a, a community survey in, in the Sisters area. So when I say Sisters country, it was like basically within the Sisters School District, so well beyond the Sisters, City of Sisters. And the survey that was put out was looking at, well, how, what is the community value level of, of, of dark skies, and is it even worth doing something, you know, to, to preserve it? Turned out, we, we put the survey out through the nugget, through email, through word of mouth, and 335 community members responded. Of those, 98% valued being able to see the stars. 36%, so a little over a third, had little to no awareness of dark sky ordinances or standards in Sisters and Deschutes County, and I thought that was pretty interesting, again, speaking to the need to raise awareness. 30 people of the total commented on the need for education and enforcement of dark sky lighting code. 17 commented about need, the need to light for safety, using proper shielding and directing the light where it needs to go. Another 335 respondents only two expressed resistance to the ordinance or changing lights. And I, I do recognize that, you know, this was just a smattering of the community members, and these, that, these were people that chose to, to do the survey, but I found that really interesting. So in conclusion, just to recap of why this is so important, light, preserving our, our night skies can enhance the quality of life, it can increase our, or just help us gain that sense of beauty and wonder. It brings economic benefits to the community and surroundings through tourism, through attracting people to the area. It helps with human health, supports ecological health. It helps reduce energy costs and reduce emissions, which is important now. Gives us darker skies, a sense of place and peace. Preservation of the rural environment, which I think we really value being in Deschutes County. It's a draw for tourism, it's a, a huge benefit for education, and it gets a natural heritage for our future generations. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I, I feel like I'm learning a lot. This is very helpful, everyone. Let's see if anyone has any specific questions here for Rema Giveit. See here, we have. I will ask a question in that case. So this also, I'll probably also ask the same question to Elise Wolf about wildlife specifically, but I do have a question about how, you mentioned the timer, it's, it would be helpful to have these lights on timers as much as possible, because then they can go off when they're not needed. I think if I'm understanding the code the way it is now, your light can be of whatever brightness you want, any level of brightness, as long as it's on a 20-minute timer. So some people, we had one person come out and provide some public testimony about a, a different issue, but in the course of that issue, he had mentioned that this, his neighbor's light comes on, it's, it's a really bright light, but he wasn't able to, he actually did want to make a complaint, but there wasn't anything anyone could do to help him because it was on a 20-minute timer. And this was disruptive to him and his sleep pattern because the light was shining in his window. And so you can imagine, you, you fall asleep, finally goes off, something triggers that light. And so in, in his case, it was actually very disruptive. I'm going to ask Elise Wolf to comment on what, what that might be like for an owl or something, to suddenly just be blasted with light for 20 minutes and it goes off again. So I wanted to ask you your opinion on, it is obviously better than on all the time, but do you want to comment on how?
Sure. So I was going to talk about that in my presentation. Are you asking Rema, or are you asking me?
I was going to ask Rema and then ask you again.
Okay, because you didn't mention my name. Sorry, I got confused.
No, that I, yes, I was confusing.
Oh, no worries.
Yeah, let's, let's see if Rema can comment, and then, but I, I really want you, I really want to hear what you think. So yeah, that's your preview to my question. Rema, do you want to comment at all on, on that?
Yeah, I do. I think that, that changing the language so that lights need to be dimmer, especially at night, and warmer, and then also in this case, all shielded. So if that light was shielded, there wouldn't be trespass into the neighbor's window because it wouldn't cross the property line. And so it seems to me that lights don't need to stay on for 20 minutes when they're on timers, if it, or on a motion sensor. If it needs to be on, then that's, that's one thing, because it's being used. But if it's not being used, it seems like it could just go right back off. But the key there to me, besides the brightness and the color, is shielding it so that it prevents any light trespass in the first place.
Okay, so you're saying like, maybe if, like, lights should be on motion sensors, but being on a motion sensor doesn't make you exempt from all the other recommendations? Got it. Okay, thank you. Okay. Anyone else want to ask Rema Giveit a question? Okay, good. Then we will move on to Peter Gatawski, who will talk with us as the Deschutes County Community Development Director. Okay, good. Then we will move on to Peter Gutowski, who will talk with us um as the Deschutes County Community Development Director uh for code compliance.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, Commissioners and to our esteemed panelists. Admittedly, this is a I have a a a hard act to follow um to articulate uh our our systems that we have, and I I mentioned the kind of how local building codes are are administered. What I'd like to do very briefly, and then I'll just quickly summarize kind of how we're applying code compliance, but I think it's important for the for the entire audience, just I'm going to share with you some population statistics. Um in 2012, Deschutes County's population was 160,000 people. Bend had 77,000, Redmond was 26,000, Sisters was 2,000, Lapine was 1,600. And the unincorporated community area, community population was just over 52,000. We all remember 2012 was still real, very much the heart of the recession. Um nine years later in 2021, Bend's population went up by over 40,000 people, excuse me, Deschutes County's population went up to over 40,000 people. How that's distributed, Bend gained uh 23,000, little over 23,000 people, Redmond, another 10,000, Sisters 1,200, Lapine, another 1,000, and the unincorporated population increased by 9,000. When we look out to the population forecast into over the next 20 years, I just picked 2045 randomly. Deschutes County's population will be 310,000 people. That's estimated to be quite as low and a newer forecast that's forthcoming this year will, I think, raise these numbers. But as of right now, this is a forecast from Portland State University. Deschutes County's population is 310,000. Bend's population is 168,000 people. That's 90,000 more people by 2045. Redmond is 50,000, 53,000 people. Uh Sisters goes from 3,000 people to over fi- to a total of 5,000 people. So they gained 2,000 more residents. Lapine gets another 1,100 residents. And Deschutes County's population is gains 19,000 more residents to 79,000 people. I I share that with you in part, some of the comments that have been made today are acknowledging the light domes from the city of Bend and the city of Redmond. And those are going to get larger. Uh I need to clarify, there was a remark earlier this evening. I need to clarify that Deschutes County's lighting ordinance only applies to the unincorporated areas of Deschutes County. It does not apply to Sisters, it does not apply to Redmond, it does not apply to Bend. And as I just echoed, the 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 population, this is the Oregon land use system, is going to allocate or generate or direct growth to our cities. And one other remark that's worth noting is that what's being discussed in the legislature and at else at the Land Conservation and Development Commission is a climate action plan that is further directing growth for cities over 50,000 people. So that's that's Bend now, and it will be Redmond in the foreseeable future to address climate action by in by directing infill and higher density into our cities, into our largest city, which will, of course, generate uh more development and certainly potentially more lighting. Um so that's, I just, I think that's something that we all need to step back and put into perspective. The other thing that's worth noting um as well as some of the earlier presentations showed the urban growth boundary, I just want to acknowledge from 2012 to 2016, Bend's urban growth boundary increased by over 2,000 acres um as they to to accommodate future growth uh out to 2028. So anyway, with that with context, to talk about the code compliance program that we have. We now have five code compliance officers that are handling over 700 cases. We have a manual that, a policies and procedures manual that prioritizes certain types of of complaints. And and please do not take my remarks to diminish the importance of dark skies. Um I think the the presentations this evening and the statements that have been provided in the past are very articulate and underscore how beneficial dark skies are. My obligation is just to tell you where our priorities are as a department. So we prior, our highest priority cases are dealing with issues related to unpermitted land use, unpermitted structures, many of which are people are living in them. Uh matters pertaining to onsite wastewater treatment systems that are not being maintained or being tapped into that are causing water quality challenges and and solid waste. So with that, most, a lion's share of our cases fall into those categories. As someone mentioned this evening, we are a complaint-driven uh code compliance system. We are not going out and canvassing our community, looking for for complaints. Um our sheriff does, I will acknowledge that our sheriffs uh out in the field, if they notice something that meets those higher priorities that I just summarized, they will let us know because it's a matter of eminent public health and safety. When it comes to the lighting ordinance, we only receive a handful every year um that we do address. I will say that most of them, in my experience, are neighborhood-related or neighborhood, there's neighbors that are having conflict amongst one another's about how they relate to one another, a bit of a Hatfield or McCoy situation. But we are successful in in providing information and literature to try to remedy the 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 light pollution that that is being reported. Admittedly, it is difficult to administer a code. Um you know, the the code's been in place since 92. We have thousands of dwellings and residences that were established before the the lighting ordinance. And so one has to document how old that lighting fixture was, you know, whether or not it's 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 violating some of the technical provisions of our code. So it it is, it can be problematic, which I think most local governments have to contend with. So um anyway, I'll pause there. That provides a context of our department, gives you a certainly a sense of where our growth is is headed. And you know, I I look to the, certainly we as staff, we rec, we we welcome comments, recommendations, suggestions, as our chair noted, for the planning commission's consideration that will ultimately be presented to the Board of County Commissioners. So thank you for uh giving me the this time for and to offer those remarks.
Commissioner Kieris, you're muted. Thank you. Okay, our, first of all, are there any questions or comments for Peter from the planning commissioners? And then I'm actually going to ask the panelists um if they um have any questions or comments for Peter um as well. Um are there any planning commissioners? Let's see here. Okay, um comments from the panelists or questions from the panelists about, panelists about um code compliance enforcement? Uh yes, Bill Colak?
Yeah. Yeah, on the population statistics, those are exactly reasons, Peter, that uh we need in the in the Deschutes County, unincorporated area to, you know, make progress on the uh situation with the the poor, you know, poor lighting that we have. And of course, you know, it's a holistic problem, as you point out. City of Bend needs to get engaged too. They have a lighting ordinance which is equally, you know, enforced by complaints. So the the goal going forward would be to have enough uh you know, restriction or control, I should say, on new lighting that uh we don't get into the situation where we, you know, suddenly look like the Los Angeles basin. Yes, thank you.
Excellent. Um I see Elise Wolf, you have your hand up.
I was just going to say that it sounds really uh like we should be highly motivated to get uh the code so well-established and detailed enough that when somebody comes in to do at least to do development, we're we're not missing something. In our neighborhood, we have a new house and barn that was remodeled extensively, not even three years ago. And the code says shielded lighting in it, um which is pretty good. But there is no shielded lighting on there. Those lights are on all night long. I have pictures of it. It's in my presentation. So I think we even had some code that could have been um implemented here. So um anyway.
Oh, thank you. Excellent. Uh Commissioner Williams?
So a lot of the light that we're dealing with now, you know, has been around for a while. I don't know if, uh you know, like maybe PSAs, uh public service announcements. These panelists have shown some amazing graphics, some amazing uh overlays of what was, what is, and and the potential of what could be. If we could like do a PSA talking about uh using warmer lights when you're replacing light bulbs or uh the sky is a precious resource or saving money, uh the economics, the night vision, uh uh like Reema said, sense of place in the universe if if, you know, maybe just a PSA on on TV. Uh something that can catch someone, maybe when they're a little off guard. Uh like, oh, I know, I might think about that. Uh I live in the woods. I don't have a single light on outside ever. I have a two-minute uh floodlight in case something does come into my property, and that's it. But I'm even thinking, you know, hey, maybe I should change mine to a warmer light, a lower Kelvin. So uh things like that to where we can educate people without shoving it down their throats. Yeah, just kind of maybe give them a pause to think about something.
But that's a good idea. Um to add to that briefly, um what about social media? The county has an excellent social media presence. Um something to think about if there could be a nice graphic to just, you know, have you thought about this kind of thing? Um not like you have to do this, but um protect our dark.
Things that make you, things that make you go hmm.
Yeah, and like protect our dark skies, do these three things. Um. Okay, um Reema Givitt, yes, hand, your hand is up.
I really like those ideas. It's making me have thoughts about, you know, just maybe projects for students. And so um but I also want to just reiterate that we are at a very critical time as we're looking at projection of growth in this area that is kind of a, it's 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 kind of now or never. And so it just reinforces the importance of what we're doing. So thank you.
Commissioner Kieris?
Commissioner Swisher, yes.
The conversation that Peter had about code enforcement and the the way it's enforced, as well as previous comments by the other panelists about the economic impact, uh positive and potentially negative in all of this, uh raises my thought. And I guess a question to anyone who would want to respond, if we have another panel, um my thought is, could it be focused on economics of this particular issue? In other words, what what are the positive impacts of tourism and those kinds of things to the county? How much lodging tax does it bring in, et cetera, et cetera? And then what are the costs of actually enforcing? For example, where does the money come from for stronger code enforcement or to have code enforcement? Not necessarily just complaint-driven or have it as part of any new dwelling to actually be inspected beyond life and safety, but for dark skies, et cetera, before the sign-offs go on. So those are just thoughts about it. And and again, I guess looking for reactions, do we need another panel? And if we do, would the economic aspect be a sort of a driving factor about it from all angles?
Excellent. Um I think I would like to suggest we um hear the last presentation and then just maybe immediately go to Commissioner Swisher's last comment to start to um discuss um uh specifically about the next panel. Um and also, I'm just uh looking at my Q and A window, and I noticed that there was a a member of the public who had some good comments. Um and they um keep appearing and reappearing, which is why I look distracted on my computer. Um but I would also, um as I said at the beginning, like to welcome comments or questions from the public who are not panelists. Um if if we can keep them brief, just because of time. So first we'll hear from Elise Wolf and um then we'll uh we'll see if there are time for at least a few brief comments from other participants. Um if there, if there are many comments from other participants, then we, um as we discussed at the last meeting, are open to making a special agenda item in a future meeting. Um but um I think it would be nice to allow a few. Um so uh without further ado, let's move on to Elise Wolf's presentation.
Okay, everyone can hear me all right? Is that a yes?
Yes, yes.
I don't win any techie awards here. Um so my name is Elise Wolf. I am the Director and the Wildlife Rehabber for Native Bird Care. This is a avian rescue and rehabilitation organization. We've been in business for about 13 years. And uh I'm also a project of East Cascade Audubon Society. And I've been a Bend resident or county resident for 26 years. I live in Sisters now. So I'm going to start this program uh with talking about just, uh this is a picture of out from Terrebonne. We already understand from these, all these other previous presentations, what these things are. They're also called artificial lights at night. So if you're doing any kind of research uh in your PubMed or Google Scholar, that's what you'll see a lot if you're looking for research, not necessarily light pollution. So here you can just see how we've lit up the county. Everybody's talked about that. This was down in 2017. That's the Millie Fire right there.
Excuse me, Elise?
Yeah.
We're not, we're not seeing your presentation. We're seeing just the opening of your presentation un-unpresented, the first slide.
Okay. All right, let me try getting out of that. Um.
You may need to hit slideshow.
That will um.
You can also manually click on those to move through it.
Yeah, I was actually. And so I'm not sure why you guys aren't seeing that.
You might try just resetting it and see if it it works.
I don't know what. Okay, I'm just, I'm going to redo the share.
Yeah, that may work.
Yeah.
Okay, that looks different than it did before. It looks like you might, you may be able to click through.
Can you see just this front first slide?
Yeah, I can see the first slide and then a little preview of the next slide.
Yeah, that really shouldn't be happening here. Um.
Well, this does look different than the original view where we were only looking at the first slide. Um do you want to try clicking to the?
Here we go. Hang on. How about that?
Um can you try clicking the next slide button and see if we see the next slide or not?
Okay. Oh, my sheen, screen sharing is paused. Here we go, hang on.
Okay, yeah, so now we can see the second slide, slide two of 18.
Okay.
So that that might be working.
Okay, says artificial lights at night.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
One again, perfect.
There we go. Okay. There we go, okay. So let me go back to this one. So anyway, this is a picture taken out of Terrebonne, you can see how we're lighting it up here, um, in, in, uh, central Oregon, and when we light things up that much, you asked about owls, we can see that we're making large ecologically, ecosystem-wide changes based on light pollution. So let's talk about, um, what the initial light flut, what the light pollution impacts really are. So I could actually talk for about three hours on each one of these, um, but I'm not going to do that today. Um, so, you know, basically, you know, Rema covered some of these for the human species, but when we talk about what the effects are, we're talking about every single species. A lot of what we're seeing in, for human impacts are also happening, happening all the way down the food web into our insect populations. And so, the physiological effects, how it stimulates the pineal gland to, um, shut off melatonin production, that happens in every single strata of our, of our biosphere, so all the animals, all the way down, uh, to, to insects. Uh, psychological, that's going to be fear and insects and so on, uh, large widespread ecological impacts that we're seeing, and economics, uh, is a big one, and then all of that contributes to quality of life. So the science on this is really clear, sometimes we want to debate science, but in this case, we are on the edge of massive global ecological impacts. They're happening right now, here in central Oregon. I see them all the time in my bird patients. I have a lot of birds coming in, very skinny because of the lack of insects here, um, and last year was an absolutely extraordinarily devastating experience for any wildlife here. We had baby birds, uh, roasting in their nests, lots of failures, uh, and lots of dead insects because they couldn't handle the smoke, because, there's a whole physiological reasons why insects die from smoke inhalation, very similar to us, um, and birds as well. So the big impacts are, what does the light do for, uh, migration? So, and that's animal movement as well, so, are they attracted to the light, are they repelled by the light? Certain behaviors wind up being changed, how they, um, when they sleep, how much they sleep, where they live, um, and so on and so forth. Foraging and food supply, developmental stages in all of your young, general health, uh, it gets eroded by the light pollution and the impacts on the physiology of, of an organism, uh, includes immunity lowering and reproduction, and breeding is a big problem right now with, with our birds and insects, young, uh, of course, and increased predation. The robins in Portland are having a really hard time because the city's so lit up that the pro population can find a robin nest really easily, and so they're just picking off those babies every single summer. So who's affected? Well, we all are, it's, it's not nature versus humans, it's, we are. We are at the top of that food chain. Um, so all of your, your nocturnal animals, your, um, your, your, your deer, your birds, everybody is, is affected, and what we know now is that fish and aquatic life are affected as well. They're affected differently, and I'll talk about that in a minute. Um, so what's, what happens on the bottom of the food chain, it's insects, and right now, we are facing massive insect losses, not just here, but globally, and it has a lot of scientists really freaked out. So let's talk about their, the, one of the most, um, obvious, uh, issues with light pollution is attraction, this is when the animal comes towards the light. In these, uh, New York Tribute Tower, um, light fixtures, you can see, those are all birds, uh, flying up there through the, through the light column. There's billions of insects probably in there too, but the camera isn't catching those because they're much smaller, obviously. So the first thing choice we have is, do we want to use blue or amber light? And if, if they wanted to stop killing the a hundred and sixty thousand birds that die in those columns every year, they could actually just switch those lights to amber light. Now, I say just, but, um, they could do something. So the big thing about columns, when, when birds or insects are attracted to a light, they can't necessarily get out, it's called, it's called a wall. And it's like if you go to the bathroom in the middle of the night, and you turn the light on, adapt to that, and then walk back out into the hallway where it's dark, you're going to stop for a few minutes, and that's what's happening here, these birds can't see to get out. That sounds really stupid, and it sounds really, well, that's not a very good evolutionary process, but they haven't evolved to have light columns in their night skies. So they're on a diurnal, uh, or nocturnal, or, I mean, crepuscular, uh, schedule, which means, you know, daylight, nighttime, that's diurnal, and then crepuscular, obviously, is, is, uh, morning, uh, dawn dusk. So, there's that. So just to get some reality going as to what we are losing, light pollution doesn't cause all one billion birds that we're losing here in the United States every year, but it is a big part of it, uh, because only a few days, there's a ten-day reg, uh, window about, where massive numbers of birds come through, and we are on the Pacific Flyway, so that means that we have three hundred and twenty species just combing right over Oregon, um, and they do that in a very narrow window of time, uh, in September, and if the downtown lights are on, they're going to attract those birds, they're going to try to get a snack, they're going to get caught in the building lights downtown, they're going to fly to their exhaustion, and they're either going to hit a window or land on the ground and get picked up by the, the street sweepers. So when we're talking about the county, of course, this is a downtown Bend picture, but it really is poignant, because you've got all these people having fun, and we are, this is our human scape, we have a right to have one part, or some parts of the river system that are set up for the human species, but you can see these birds are flying off, um, and that's because it is a form of habitat loss. When we take over a river system, if we continue, for example, to light the entire Deschutes River Corridor, which is a wildlife corridor with lights, people's homes lit up on that river, we're going to be affecting fish, and we're going to kill habitat for these people, we're going to prevent them from coming, they will, will be repelled from that habitat, and that is a form of habit, habitat loss. So here's some pictures of, this one, uh, in the far-right, uh, lower-left corner is not, that's a, uh, screenshot from the web, but you can see, you can just imagine, imagine that is one of our baseball or high school fields, or, but this little, uh, barn up at the top left, and the one on the right is out of Al, somewhere, um, both of those have lighting situations, the, the greenhouse is a new structure, it could have blackout curtains like the one down below, and, and not be a problem. Um, this light in the left-hand corner, uh, that is one of the county, that's a light that the county used to give away to people, and I don't know if we could, you know, create some kind of fund or grant in which we took all those back and gave them a shielded amber light, uh, and asked them to turn it off at night. Um, so this guy, you can see, this is another example of a local, uh, county home, in which they're just lit up, and no shielding, they're not even meeting the code that's current right now, so, um, I don't know when this place was built, it might be or, or original, but, um, we need to figure out a way to somehow address that. And, um, so anyway, and, and in terms of insect, uh, wildlife, so this is great for great-horned owls, because a great-horned owl is going to see anybody that comes in through there, any mouse, any, uh, raccoon, any, um, anybody, um, or any bird that is, you know, weighs in there somehow, uh, including small raptors like your, uh, pygmy and screech owls, nobody will live in here, um, and even your insects will be hard-put. So what are some of the things we want to think about? We've already talked about these, amount, characteristics, duration, and, um, I have blocked my things, so I'm not sure what that one says, and I don't know how to change it, so. All right, another good idea that I thought, we already have, well, uh, zones that we have set up under county code, the Wildlife Habitat Combining Zone, and the Forest Zone, for example, we could use zones, zones to create specific, um, uh, code language that applies to those, uh, areas. For example, we could have habitat corridors and core habitat areas. This is what some of the people who are putting dark sky ordinances together for their towns and cities are doing right now, this is, these are all maps, um, showing where the primary, uh, wildlife habitat and corridors are, and then they'll, um, they'll a, address the zoning for those. I would like to propose that we have no light zones, because for fish and aquatic areas along, at least along our river systems, you know, not necessarily all of our wild places, but we need to have the idea that we should have places where there is no light. Um, so, this is, uh, the barn that is in my neighborhood, this was just a couple of mornings ago, this was a remodel a couple of years ago, maybe three years ago, none of the lights even meet the code that's written today for shield, for shielding. Um, these lights are on, as you can see, this was about four, five in the morning, um, those have been on all night long. So what happens when the lights are left all night long? It means that a, a cricket or an insect isn't going to breed there, because they have to, physiologically for reproduction, have a dark period of night for their organs and everything to work. So if you take that away and give them a twenty-four-hour daylight, then you have essentially eviscerated that small core of habitat from, uh, being an effective and bi, biodiverse eco, ecosystem. So one of the things that, you know, we might want to do to address this, is think about how we can make the code in other parts of the ordinances, uh, synchronize with what we're doing with the sky, dark sky, or, you know, um, dark skies, lighting ordinances, and education, of course, you know, um, we don't just have astrotourism here, we have birders, we have birders from all over the world come here for the woodpecker festival that happens in June, because central Oregon is one of the best places to see about twelve different species of woodpecker. So we have a lot of birders who come here, and there's enormous amount of money for the businesses, whether it's in photography equipment, or, um, housing, whatever. Applicability, I think, even though we have the law, the Oregon law, that says that we can't retroactively, I think we have to look at some other options, and here's some ideas that, I poured through about ten different, uh, county, uh, city codes for dark skies, uh, Ketchum Idaho, Flagstaff, Arizona, Multnomah County just passed theirs, not, not too long ago, um, Sun River, and I think if you compiled those and poured through them, and that might be something that we do, I, you know, we started to do that in the code, um, where we went, ordinance by ordinance by ordinance, I think there's a lot of ways we could combine these, or evaluate what other people have done, combine them into the code. As far as I can see right now, um, the code doesn't have any proactive elements in it, it's, here's the exemptions, and here's the prohibitions, and there's, there's not really a good statement of purpose, um, there's no, here's posit, here's all the things that we want to get done, so one of the things that we did, um, and let me just switch, let me just switch to my Word program right now, oh, oh, I, I lost you. Sorry. Am I back?
You're back.
Okay, let me try this. Um, I was just going to show you what we've, so yeah, so here's some of the things that, you know, got worked on in this code, um, and you're, we're all, you know, is a lot, uh, you can see, we've made some recommendations, a set of purposes, um, issues that I think we all need to think about and address, um, you know, there's a, a good long list right there, um, and so I think, you know, if we maybe had another meeting where we all brainstormed, we'd get more time, us as this panel, get more time to pour over these things, look at the other codes that we're seeing in other cities, and pull some of this together, put our, some brainstorming ideas together, and then maybe come back together and try to hash out, you know, what, what could fly here. So I just want to say thank you for letting a wildlife representative be on one of the panels for Deschutes County, um, all, all of us really appreciate that. Thank you, I'm done.
We really, I, I know I can speak for the whole commission, say we really appreciate hearing this presentation, um, and is Susan back elevated again? Can we get Susan back? There she is. Hello, Commissioner Vice Chair Altman. Um, okay, so, let's see, so we have a couple of things, um, we want to see if there are a few, um, members of the public who are participating, um, as observers, um, if anyone would like to make a short comment, um, I see there is a question or comment from Steve Moore in the question-answer section, maybe if anyone else, um, would really like to make a comment, you could, um, use the Q and A feature to type your question, and then we'll see, if there's a whole lot of questions, then we will, um, schedule that into a future meeting, um, but if there's just a few, then we'll take them today. Uh, so would, um, somebody be able to elevate Steve Moore to, um, the panelist level, so we can see if he would like to speak, or, you know, of course, if you prefer not to speak, I would, I can read your question, it'd be nice to hear it from the source. There you are, and then you'll just need to unmute, um...
Okay. Um, and, very honestly, um, I don't think there's, I'll add anything, uh, in addition to what I've already written in the chats, unless you want me to summarize, uh, uh, what I actually wrote, uh, I'd have to actually go back and look at it, uh, as well. Um, let me, oh, nope, no open questions, so, uh, anyway.
Yeah, you, you could summarize maybe what, what you were saying in the chat, um, and...
All right, uh, I came up with, uh, basically three different comments, uh, one of them was, I really appreciate, um, uh, the county, uh, hosting this discussion in the first place, I think that's fantastic. Um, yeah, um, uh, so consideration was, um, that, while I think the vast majority of the light that is causing the light pollution problem is coming from private sources, uh, businesses, residences, et cetera, but, um, the process could certainly start with, uh, with the public institutions, uh, like, uh, streetlights and, uh, lights around, uh, public facilities being retrofitted to become more, um, uh, dark sky preservation compliant, um, and, um, I registered my own remark that, uh, here in my own house, I live actually in a subdivision in Bend, so this, I understand this does not apply, where I live is not controlled by the county ordinance, uh, this is a city matter, but nevertheless, uh, my point is that there is a very garish, unshielded streetlight, uh, right on my corner that, uh, illuminates all too well my, uh, living, or my dining room and my kitchen, um, with the blinds pulled shut, that's an extreme case of light trespass, and it's a city-owned facility. My, uh, remark is that the, uh, county could begin with its own fixtures to, uh, to start, um, addressing... start addressing this, this kind of a retrofit and then start to set an example that perhaps can be followed by the various cities within the county itself and maybe get the ball rolling on, on tackling this situation. And my other remark, when there was the discussion about the projected population growth, and that's well understood. You have more structures, more people living in structures, structures, there's going to be more light. No question on, and no argument on that account, but what I also see is that if we as, like a local society, were to start adopting these five principles promoted by the IDA for lighting, that I would dare guess that, that if it caught on and became widespread, that even with the growth, you'd probably see a light reduction if it's all done properly. The issue is not having light. The issue is what we do with the light. And I pointed as an example, kind of like one of the shining star cities, which is also growing pretty fast, and that's Flagstaff, Arizona. They do, they have a very strong ordinance to preserve their dark skies and especially for one of their main highlight attractions, the Lowell Observatory. And while it's not perfect, it's largely successful. So, those are my remarks.
Thank you. Those were very well articulated and insightful, good ideas. Let's see, so I think we should now, just seeing the time, we should now probably proceed to a planning commission discussion. See, maybe, oh, we have Russ Robertson has a comment and then, Commissioner Crawford, did I see your hand up? Okay, sorry. Yeah, let's hear from you, Russ Robertson.
Yeah, I just have one thing to maybe give some input to on this lighting ordinances that heard a lot about tonight with about the different types of light and the effects of it and everything. And one thing that this lighting current code lacks that could be updated is it addresses all the different types of light fixtures with wattages and everything that are frankly outdated. The lighting industry is, came a long ways since this has been written, and most of the lights you see out there right now are going towards LEDs. So it used to be like the lower the wattage, the lower the lumen output of the light, right? Put a 25-watt light bulb in, you wouldn't get very much light out. You put 100-watt light bulb in, you get a lot more light. But with LEDs, you could get a lot of light out of little wattage. And the way the current tables are set up is there's no requirements for shielding for LED fixtures. It should be based off of more of like a lumen output or color scheme for the different color spectrums of the lights give out, but seeing a lot of the pictures and some of the slideshows and presentations that some of the panelists are presenting, you know, this light saying it wasn't code compliant, which, when I was looking at it, I'm not sure if it would even require it out of the current code because it may not be the type that's required out of the, of the chart. Does that make sense?
Yes, this makes sense to me, and this is something I was very interested to hear about. So it sounds like you're, you're saying that language is outdated for the fact that a lot of lights are LED now. And so we should be deciding the brightness not based on watts.
Correct, yeah.
Based on another metric like lumens?
Right.
Or does, does it have to be lumens based on the color temperature, or is it sufficient to?
Well, that's something that the, I guess the committee would have to decide, right? There's the different light spectrums are affected in different ways. Like I heard a lot about like warm light and bright light or blue light, you know, is different. There's a different, there's a whole color spectrum of lights, you know, and like an incandescent is more of a warm light where you get a fluorescent or a low-pressure sodium light was more of a, back in the day was more of a blue light. A lot of LEDs are turning more blue, but they make them in all different types and colors and everything nowadays.
So it's something we will, we'll need to consider is, do we want to recommend guidelines based on both temperature and also lumens? And, and yeah, I think that's something really important for us to discuss as part of the technical, what are we actually going to recommend part of the discussion? Yeah, no, that was really helpful. That's, that's something that, yeah, we need, we need that information. Let's see, so.
Commissioner Williams has had her hand up as well.
Thank you. I, I keep having to toggle back and forth, so I apologize when I miss people. The hand function is very helpful because it sort of bumps you to the, like the actual Zoom hand, so Commissioner Williams, yes.
Like what Mr. Robertson just said, and this folds into what Mr. Moore said. We need to look at what the different bulbs are, you know, the LED, the this, the that, but without necessarily having to spend money and retrofit on a county level. We have county buildings in the city, we have county buildings elsewhere. We could look maybe just as simply as when we're changing out light bulbs, get them to these lower Kelvins so that as a county, we're representing that we're trying to take the Illuminati down, per se. Take our luminescence to a a level that the insects can handle, the birds can handle. And that's just like, you know, the outdoor of the county courthouse. Changing those light bulbs out, just, you know, the, the minor steps that the county can take to reduce its glow.
Thank you. I see that we have Vice Chair Altman's hand up, and then next we'll have Grant Tandy after Vice Chair Altman.
Thank you, Chair Kieris. I apologize for disappearing first at my screen. I was like a ghost and then I just stopped working. So I missed part of Elise's presentation. I wanted to ask if all the presenters tonight would be able to send their presentations perhaps to Peter, and then he could send them on to the commission, because I sure would like to see those again. One thing that I had a question about for all of the presenters, and I don't know when this is going to come up again, but certainly any UGB expansion is really a time to get involved with what's going on, especially in the city of Bend, obviously, because that's the biggest. Have you been involved in, in spoken up at any meetings about a UGB expansion, or as a UGB expansion would be considered in the future, do you see yourselves getting involved? Because I, I think this is something that probably people don't really think about as an issue, because obviously housing is such an issue, but it certainly would be worth consideration when that discussion does come up in the future.
Great. So let's go to Grant Tandy next.
Hey, yeah, I just wanted to talk for a second about the whole issue surrounding smart fixtures. I've seen a lot of cities implementing new LED fixtures and they seem to be, the beauty of it is that you can control, you can preserve the length of the fixture, how long it's going to last, by, you know, only having it at 80% up until 11:00 PM, and then past 11:00 PM, dim it to 50, 60%. And so you're doubling the life of that fixture by being able to control it to a lower lumen output. It's, it's one of those things that it could also be, if there was an emergency, you could be able to turn all the lights up or down and control them as needed. I've also heard input from, I don't know if Bill, you remember the city that implemented this, but they, they had dimmed their lighting like 15 or 20% over the course of a couple of weeks, and no one in the city even noticed, because it wasn't enough for the human eye to really pick up, but it was an important change in just brightness overall, so I don't think.
Tucson, Arizona.
Yeah, Tucson, yeah. So the smart fixtures can kind of solve the problem with LED, but like Russ was saying, yeah, the wattage equation doesn't quite translate for those, so.
Thank you. Helpful. So next we'll have Rima Givitt, and then I'm, I'm going to be, I'll be doing my role as chair and also timekeeper and making some suggestions about where to go next. So yeah, let's hear from Rima Givitt.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a quick comment on what you'd said about this paying attention to urban growth boundary grow in different cities. And this is related, but not directly related, and that is Sisters actually is currently addressing revising their lighting code in, or their lighting standard in the town, kind of simultaneously as the county, so just so we know, like, we are kind of at a point where other, it's not just the county, but Sisters is also addressing revising their code to be more updated right now.
Excellent. Thank you. So it seems to me that we have two decisions to make left tonight that have to be made. The first decision, and we also have a transportation system plan update, and then we also have staff and planning commission comments. So one decision that needs to be made, are we going to have another panel? And the other decision that probably needs to be made is, what should the next, if we do have another panel, what should it focus on? So I think I'll just go ahead and say that as the chair, I will entertain a motion if anyone would like to make one about the possibility of a future panel.
I think we've had a lot of comment tonight, a lot of input tonight. I think the panelists bring a lot of different backgrounds, a lot of different perspectives. I would maybe ask the panelists from their point of views, and I think Elise did great with her blueprinting of Deschutes 15.10, and I wouldn't mind seeing a copy of that, but do we think the panelists might be interested in actually putting some tooth into what they think some changes should be?
So I think we should do a motion first, so we can stick with the process, so if, if you have a formal motion, then we could take that and then.
I motion that we have a second panel.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I sec, I second that, but in discussion, I would talk about focus.
Okay. So we can go ahead and have a discussion now about whether or not we're going to have a second panel, and if so, what would the focus be? And the, also, before we vote, the motion could be amended to include the topic, or we can have a separate motion about the topic. Either way works. But now let's go ahead and move to discussion about whether or not we will have a second panel, and so what will it be about? And Commissioner Williams' suggestion was that maybe we can ask the panelists if, if they would like to be involved with those, that second topic, or second panel, and, sorry, go ahead, Commissioner.
I think the panelists we have tonight will probably continue to be engaged because it sounds if it's a real critical issue to them. But I'm suggesting that, yes, we do need some more time on this topic and some more expertise that maybe we didn't hear from tonight. That is the Visitors Association, Chambers, what have you, about, so from their perspective, does dark sky really make any economic impact into tourism and travel and those kinds of things? That brings us to the county tax collector. And so what does overnight lodging taxes look like from the county perspective in those particular areas? Perhaps someone from Sun River, where there's a lot of overnight lodging goes on, and talking about the positive impacts. But then also the economic impacts, other kinds of panelists about if we're really going to implement this, what's going to cost in terms of additional staff? Are people paying attention to code enforcement, or at the time of permitting for new dwellings, that kind of thing? And so we start to get this balance sheet built, you know, as the, as the cost versus the benefits. Hopefully, the benefits greatly outweigh the cost, but that's an analysis that kind of needs to be done. And I think that could lead us, again, towards some specific kinds of recommendations that the planning commission would make to the commissioners.
Okay, great. Are there other points of discussion from the commissioners in terms of this motion to have a second panel? And discussion about what that panel could be like?
Madam Chair, can I make a comment from staff standpoint? Just want to make a remark. This is Peter Gatauski, again, Community Development Director, in response to Commissioner Swisher's ideas and suggestions. One thing that I would respectfully ask the commission to recognize is, as your director, I'm, I'm, at this stage, as it pertains to staffing, and what it would mean to, to administer a new code, to require plans examiners and building inspectors to review lighting, what it would mean to enforce the code. Those are, those are budgetary matters that ultimately the board gets to determine. I would respectfully still ask the planning commission, if that's something that they want to have us explore, that, that that be the recommendation, stay at a 10,000-foot level. Let us, as part of a package of recommendations or considerations, take that to the board. And, and this will probably be an iterative process, but if the board wants us to look at what the cost would be to, to administer such a new regulatory framework, I think it's their obligation to direct us to do this. This is, I'm hesitant or cautious to do that now, when we don't know the code. We don't have direction from the board to begin expending resources in this manner, and, and so I'm not trying to pour figuratively cold water on what has been a very dynamic conversation this evening. But I would, just on this point, I would ask the planning commission to, to stay at a higher level. Certainly if the commission feels, after more fact-finding, more presentations from experts in the community, if you find that this is something that you want to, want the county to explore, that you make that recommendation to the board and let, let the board directs us to, if they so choose, to evaluate what it means for us financially, budgetarily, and what it means to our, our stakeholders and constituents and our customers in CDD. Thank you.
I'm Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Swisher.
That's exactly what I was getting the point to, is to make that recommendation to the county commissioners, but they need to look at it from an economic point of view. I'm not suggesting we do the spreadsheet. But in order for us to make that recommendation, I think we have to have a great concept of what are the components that might have to be examined, or what is the kind of work that may need to be done in order for them to take on that task. And so, again, just having the categories. Well, it could imply code enforcement, it could imply more building inspection. There could be some economic benefits to the county. Those are the kinds of things that the county commissioners would certainly need to think about and decide. You know, do they want to undertake this or not? So that's the 30,000-foot that I'm suggesting goes on, not the spreadsheet analysis of all the detail.
Okay, so to clarify. Okay, so to clarify, um it sounds like you're um you're thinking that the second panel could have to do with economics and a discussion of economics, exploring the economic issues, um but not actually doing like the action item budget uh spreadsheet type activities that, of course, that would be only if the board were interested. But you you're thinking we should explore the issues at least?
Absolutely. And having our second panel have some people that we didn't hear from that does have expertise on the economic side, and they may bring some topics up that we aren't aware of, that we'd say, gee, county commissioners, you should consider this as you think about it.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. Um let's see, um are there other comments from the commissioners about um the motion that we have um getting ready to vote on whether or not we will have a second panel? Uh Vice Chair Altman.
Thank you. Um I guess I I see what Peter is saying, and I I do feel like we're getting so much into details that we may be putting the cart ahead of the horse. If I'm reading the room right, I think that all of the planning commissioners um are in favor of a dark skies ordinance and and updating it to preserve um our dark skies and prevent light pollution for all of the reasons mentioned. So I'm not sure what having another panel would do if ultimately what we're trying to decide is is whether or not to recommend this to the Board of County Commissioners. And then if they in turn say, yes, this is important, then, I mean, maybe Peter could address, so do they then send it back to staff and then and then we have a public hearing on the proposed amendments? Or maybe a little bit more about that process and how it would work, because I I this is an enlightening topic. I love the topic. I think it's amazing, and I support it in every way, but I don't know how many more conversations we need to have, because it sounds like everybody also supports it. So aside from in information sharing, I don't know, like that we could go, you know, from 100% to 1,000% support. I think we all would want to support it, but maybe from a little more from Peter about if we said um we support it, we send it to the board, we um recommend that they support it, and then what? Um just to understand, like, how deep do we really need to be going in this conversation?
Yeah, so um I I would just like to give a brief comment and then like to hear from Peter in response. Um so um I think if I understand what you're saying, you're saying that there's a number of different topics that a second panel could address. Um the Commissioner Swisher's ideas. Um I think I have an idea that if we are going to recommend changes to the ordinance, that I would like to hear more technical specifics about that before recommending any changes if we were going to do that. Um and I think what you're saying is maybe we should um ask the board if they want to hear more um before we go deeper into it. Um okay, Peter, did you want to respond to that at all, or were you asking for Peter's comments?
Well, yeah, what I what I'm saying is um Chair Karas to sort of go along with what you're saying is I think we might be doing things out of order. Like, we might be getting way too detailed when we're not there yet, but I'm I'm curious what Peter.
Yeah, maybe, Peter, can you speak to um your understanding of what the board was asking us to do? Um were they just wanting us to have the panel and and connect sort of see if there was something here? Or were they wanting us to just make a specific recommendation about the ordinance? Do you know?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioner Altman. Let me um let me first respond to Commissioner Altman's response, and then I think that'll, well, let me respond to Commissioner Altman, and and then I think that will inform how the planning commission can go forward. Um I I think what's what what is going to be helpful, this is there's a lot to unpack um as evidenced by the the testimony today by our panelists, and and a heartfelt thank you for spending your Thursday evening with us to share your opinions and expertise about this important topic. My sense is the Board of County Commissioners is interested in understanding the the effectiveness of our dark skies ordinance or our lighting ordinance, and to understand whether or not it's worth revisiting. And certainly tonight, there's there's been uh I think I think the panel's um near consensus, right, that this is worth revisiting in a in a prudent and thoughtful manner. To Commissioner Altman's question, my thought is, and it doesn't happen, just shouldn't happen tonight, we're at 8 o'clock, we have several more agenda items, but maybe at your next next meeting or or the one after that, the planning commission could think seriously about what kind of recommendations do they want the board to consider? Um there's, you know, when it comes to revisiting uh an ordinance that is as old as this one, there's all sorts of processes that can be explored, you know, uh convening a a technical advisory committee or a stakeholder group to to really go through the minutia, to understand, it gets back to Commissioner Swisher's remarks of really understanding the details about what what's possible in relationship to the resources that CDD has. Um so my thoughts in terms of how you can move this forward and maintain momentum is articulate to the board what what you find is meaningful in terms of this ordinance and how it could be revisited in a constructive, comprehensive manner. I I certainly don't think we're ready to jump in and and start building amendments. I think that there's there's, as noted by commissioners, there's a segment of our community that hasn't had a chance to participate, the Chamber of Commerce, the Central Oregon Builders Association, other aspects, other elements of our community or or members of our community that can broaden the conversation to make sure that we're recognizing everybody's viewpoint. Um to the extent that there's support to to continue and to develop a work program that looks holistically at this at this ordinance, um I think the commission is is well situated to talk about, uh like I said, convening working groups and and uh and vetting some of these issues out. By doing that, staff can then engage the board uh about this opportunity as it relates to the rest of our work plan, um as we head into the next fiscal year, and with some significant projects that are about to or already in process, like the transportation system plan update. So those are our thoughts for the planning commission that I would offer. And to Commissioner Karas, I think the board really is interested in hearing from the planning commission about what it means to revisit the dark skies ordinance and ways, if there is consensus, to to re to revise it. Um uh thoughts and perspectives to do that in a way that that is uh transparent and inclusive of all members of our community that have uh interest in this subject matter. Thank you.
Okay, um so right now, the motion that's on the floor is to have a second panel. Um it's been seconded um and discussed. Are there other comments from the planning commission to discuss that motion before we vote on it? Okay, so we will now vote and to let me just clarify something briefly. So um the motion from Commissioner Williams, um you you moved to, um sorry, my brain is getting a little fried. Uh you moved to have a second panel for dark skies, correct? And that's a second panel in the near future. Not like we're not voting that the like if you vote no on this, it doesn't mean you never want to see another dark skies panel ever again. It means we're not um we would not be doing one right now.
And I I understand uh what's being said. Down the down the road possibly, I think it would behoove us. Um and again, you know, still just six months into to to all of this, I don't want to jump the gun. Um I think there's definitely more information uh to to be provided uh to be extrapolated. We don't have to do it tomorrow. Um I I do think we need I do think we need to have one at one point, yes.
Okay. So um is everyone clear on the motion that we're voting on? Just to make sure everyone knows what they're voting for, please raise your hand if you're not clear. Okay, so um let's see, um we'll go ahead and go down the line. Um Steve Swisher, Commissioner Swisher, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh Commissioner Williams, it's your motion. Um uh Vice Chair Altman.
Yes.
Okay, um let's see, and then we have Commissioner Crawford.
No.
Okay. Um I will vote yes. The chair votes yes. Um so then we will need to um determine what the second panel will be about. Um.
Commissioner Karas, if I may, um again, Peter Gatawski, I I want us to, it's good to me, and I'm really trying to be um honest and uh not at all be seen as dictating how this program is 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 advanced ultimately to the board, but it's 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 important to acknowledge to the planning commission and to our stakeholders and panelists and those that are listening online that we have significant resource limitations within the planning division. And we are more than willing to, Tarek is more than willing to convene a second panel uh in coordination with the planning commission to continue the conversation. I I just want to say it will not be immediately, um and it could be uh several months until we have that capacity at the earliest. Um uh later this evening, Will Groves can provide an update on on where the planning division is spending its resources and the challenges that we have across the division, meeting our multiple obligations. So um we are 100% supportive of a second panel to put the planning commission in the best position possible, ultimately to make engaged, constructive, informed suggestions and or recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners to how how to keep the dark skies uh project uh as forthcoming as it as it can be. So um I ju- I just have to acknowledge that uh on the record this evening, so we can manage everyone's expectations, knowing that uh for many, this is a very important topic.
Thank you.
Chair Karas?
Yes, please.
This is just a process comment that plays into Peter's comments. I think that basically at this stage, staff has heard the kinds of conversations we've heard tonight, knows some of the gaps that perhaps we have, and that the the chair and the director can just sort of talk about that a bit and start to think about, it doesn't have to be a panel that's extensive or important tonight, but you may come up with, hey, here's two or three other components. My issue is, I don't think we've heard from the economic, um some of the economic sectors that would be impacted, but there may be others that other commissioners have or or Peter and staff has at that moment. But it seems to me like he'd come up and with a focus of a second conversation that would just augment this one and not absolutely duplicate all the work that went into it, respecting staff's time.
Thank you. Um other, so one thing is that we can, a couple of thoughts, we could try to decide what we think the topic could be tonight. Um we could all think about it for a while, since we're very short on time, and then decide, put it on the agenda for our next meeting to decide what the next topic could be, um or what the panel could look like. Um or some other option, but I guess right now I'm looking for a motion of what to do with with the decision of whether or not or how to decide what the topic is for the next panel.
I would favor waiting to the next meeting so everyone has a chance to digest it and think about it and can come back with their own perspectives that may or may may or may not agree. So.
Can you formally move that so we can discuss it and decide upon?
Yes, I can. I would move that we um uh set aside some time to discuss the panel agenda for dark skies at our next uh budget committee meeting, or excuse me, planning commission meeting.
Okay, so we're moving to set aside some time at our next planning commission meeting to discuss.
Discuss and set the agenda or topics for the future panel.
Okay. Um would anyone like to second that?
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, well, Commissioner Crawford, have you? Um uh so Commissioner Crawford has seconded the motion to set aside some time at future planning commission meeting to decide our next panel topics. Is there any discussion on this before we vote? Would anyone like to say anything else about this motion? Um let's um do discussion for the planning commission, please, and then we'll vote to Rima Giveit again. Um, okay, can we vote? Okay, we will now vote on the motion to set aside some time at future planning commission meeting to decide our next topics. Um Commissioner Swisher, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh Commissioner Crawford, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Williams, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh Vice Chair Altman?
Yes.
And I will also vote yes, so it is unanimous that we will set aside some time at future planning commission meeting to discuss the future topics of the next panel. Um, okay, and Rima Giveit had another remark to share.
So much. Um I just had a question. I know one of the directions for the panel was to provide specific feedback and recommendations related to the language and criteria contained in the lighting ordinance, and um I'm curious when the appropriate time to give those specific feedbacks would that specific feedback would be, if it would be that we give it to you in writing, um or comments on the ordinance. Or I'm imagining tonight's probably not the appropriate time, because it's getting late, but um if I know that was part of the request from that from this panel, and um we do have some recommendations specific to the the language and the code.
Uh Chair Karas, this is Tarek Rollings for the record. I was going to offer my uh my own email address. I believe all the panelists have communicated with me via email, and they're welcome to send those um as they're kind of a conducive to a written format anyway. They're welcome to send those uh code suggestions or recommendations um to me via email, and then I can forward those to the commissioners and um ultimately kind of keep them uh for future meetings or however else we want to handle that information um that they might have, if that sounds like a good idea.
That would be excellent. Yes, and I know that those those are important to us. So yes, please. Can you guys hear me okay? Okay, great. Um, all right, so now we can move to the next item on the agenda, um Deschutes County Transportation System Plan of 2020 to 2040 update with Peter Russell, our senior transportation planner. Thank you so much, Peter, for um hanging out with us and learning about dark skies with us and and um being so patient.
Yeah, that's the one that works. Good afternoon, uh good afternoon. Good evening. Peter Russell, Senior Transportation Planner, Deschutes County. Uh what we have this evening is an update on where we are in the TSP process. For those of you who haven't been through one of these before, a transportation system plan is a 20-year planning document covering all modes for the county. Um the state requires them in both cities and counties, and so we have also had some public outreach. And so what we're going to do tonight is give you some preliminary results, if you will. Uh Matt Kittleson, who's the lead on this for the consultant firm we've hired, Kittleson Associates, is going to go through a PowerPoint presentation, which will briefly recap how we got to where we are tonight, what projects have arisen based on analysis of traffic volume, crash data, capacity, a transportation safety action plan the road department did earlier. Also on the phone, we have Chris Doughty, the road department director, who's kindly funding this project. So between the three of us, we hopefully can answer any questions you might have. So with that, I will turn it over to Matt.
So with that, I will turn it over to Matt.
Is it on already? Sorry, I'm not used to the microphone. Oh, yeah, okay. Um, thank you for the chance to present. Again, I'm Matt Kittelson with Kittelson and Associates. I'll give a quick run-through, um, I'll try not to be repetitive of what Peter just described. Um, I think he covered what is a TSP and why we need it. Um, so it's a great opportunity to just refresh what, what's needed to support growth within the community from the transportation infrastructure perspective. We're focused on county facilities in the unincorporated area, um, not within the cities, which we'll highlight here in a second. The TSP incorporates a lot of documents that we're not specifically updating or revising through this process, so, um, other, other plans, the transit plan within the county, things like that, will cite and reference within the TSP as important documents that, 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 um, help inform the way this transportation system will grow. Um, we're gonna look at to 2040, um, to look at the population growth. It's been talked about a little bit tonight and, and what we're expecting. Um, and really the point of this is to, is to also engage a broad range of stakeholders, of which the Planning Commission is serving an important role of public oversight and feedback, and we also have a, a number of stakeholders on the agency side and then a broad public involvement process as well. Um, so we're looking again at the, at the county area, but not looking at the City of Sisters, Redmond Bend, and La Pine, which, which maintain and update regularly their own transportation system plans. So we're looking outside of those areas. We're also coordinating, which I'll talk about a little bit more, with ODOT on plans to their facilities as well. To date, we've completed a plan and policy review, looked at, looked at what, what exists today, some of those other plans I mentioned, documented existing and future needs, which we had, um, public feedback on in the past at an open house in the summer. We've been coordinating with agency partners, which are the cities themselves, the parks, um, departments, um, CET, the Forest Service, folks like that. Um, we've had also extensive and regular ca- connections with BPAC, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, on bicycle facility planning that they've been doing and we're incorporating into the TSP process. And then, as I mentioned, specific outreach to ODOT on the state facility planning, which is really ongoing at this time, I'll give an update on that as well. So the material I have today, um, which is in your packet, is a, is a memorandum that documents a updated list of projects that we, that we're, um, presenting as, as a, a draft list to address the needs over the next 20 years in the county. And that covers intersections, roadways, including changes to functional classification, walking and biking facilities, um, specific projects related to the Federal Lands Access Program, and then, as Peter mentioned, the Transportation Safety Action Plan, um, and, uh, projects specific to safety, um, improving, improving those outcomes within the community. Uh, we've also spent a significant amount of time updating cost estimates and priorities of projects, which ultimately helps the county, um, plan for projects, the plan for the capital improvement program, um, and make sure that we're, we're budgeting for the needs that, that this plan, um, is identifying. Um, just as a, as a quick overview of what we have currently, it's about 100 projects over the next 20 years, a, a total cost of about 185 million. That's not inclusive of some other commitments that the county might make to partner agencies with ODOT or, or, um, or other jurisdictions. Um, and then we've included high, medium, low suggestions, and we'll, today, just because of the volume of projects, we're, we'll give an overview of what's currently classified as a high priority project, and certainly welcome input, um, from the commission as, as you review it in more detail or, um, or provide that feedback today. Um, so, um, diving into it, um, the, starting with intersection projects, and we have this map up here. It's, I know it's, um, the county is big and the projects are small, so I've included a reference on the bottom of each slide to try to orient you to the general area of the memo where this map is, and then a accompanying table that provides some additional details on the projects. Um, but what you'll see here, so this is on page four. Um, what you'll see here is there's a number of intersection projects that are planned, and these include addition of turn lanes, roadway realignments to address skews at intersection, um, and also roundabouts. And there's a number of high priority projects that are highlighted in red circles on the map, and those include the Butler Market-Palbutte Highway, um, intersection, South Century-Spring River intersection, South Century-Huntington intersection, Fifth and O'Neill Highway, Burgess and Day, and then Coroner and Northwest Avenue. So spread kind of up and down the county, north to south, um, addressing some of those higher priority needs, where we're seeing either congestion or safety issues increasing within the county. Um, and then after the high priority projects, obviously, we move on to, to the next list as well. So I know this is a lot to digest, so I'll pause after, just briefly after these, if there's a question or comment so it doesn't get lost in, in the sea of information I'm sharing. So, anything that pops up with information shared so far? Okay, I'll keep going. Oh, I did something, was that me or is that? Okay, sorry. Um, roadway projects, um, are also addressed in these as opposed to the intersections themselves. These are, um, uh, projects that would, uh, upgrade a road to current county standard, um, potentially reconstruction of a road, and you can see there's a number of these projects um, in and around the county, um, uh, in the vicinity of these, of these various urban areas is a, a particular focus. Um, a couple of the high priority projects are circled in the upper right, um, north of Redmond in the Terriban area, one on Lower Bridge Way to the west, and then Smith Rock Way immediately east of Terriban are two of, of the projects. There's actually, Lower Bridge Way is broken into two projects, so it's actually three projects that you're seeing here, um, that would be some of the higher priority projects, um, a focus from the, um, roadway upgrade perspective. Um, and then I mentioned before, uh, but I'll just, uh, highlight quickly again, the ODOT facility. There was a coordination meeting just on Monday, in fact, where the county and ODOT, um, got together to talk about the projects that are, that we should be incorporating into the Deschutes County TSP from the ODOT perspective. Um, well, those are projects that not, will not necessarily be funded by the county. Um, the, the county TSP is an important document from a regional perspective to provide, um, coordination amongst jurisdictions, including ODOT, um, provide a really good, uh, picture for the public of infrastructure that's planned within the community, and then also creates an opportunity to seek future funding for projects that are important for county residents as they travel up and down the highway. So, so that coordination is ongoing and important, um, and the future updates will have a really good list of projects that ODOT and the county have talked about to make sure we're, we're reflecting those accurately within the TSP. Another key part of the Transportation System Plan is the Functional Classification Map, and this is, uh, a designation of all the roads in the county as, um, as arterial roads, collector roads, forest highway, or local roads. Um, and these designations are important because they help either the, um, um, the county itself or, or developers, uh, identify how roads should function and what standards they should be improved to. Uh, and y- if you zoom in on this, which is on page 15, you'll be able to see a little bit better than on this, this map, there's a couple of changes, um, of either functional class being upgraded, so in that, you know, something like a local road being upgraded to a collector or collector to an arterial, um, or in some cases downgraded where, um, a road that's currently an arterial or collector is going down to a lower order. And those, those changes are documented in the memo and are, are being done to make sure that the system is operating appropriately. If, if something is, 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 is seeing more traffic or more congestion than we're expecting, we want to make sure that's reflected in the classification. Um, and then if also if we're, if we're planning for a road that's bigger than that, what's needed, we're looking at downgrading that. So this is really a right sizing exercise of that functional classification system. Uh, again, I'll pause real quick just to check in if there, if there's anything, questions or comments on what we've shown so far. Okay. Um, pedestrian facilities, um, is also part of the TSP. Obviously, the county does not maintain a, a wide swath of pedestrian facilities in the form of sidewalks, but, um, certainly does within Terriban and the Tumalo areas, which are those unincorporated but, but relatively urban areas of the county. Um, so both areas have gone through, um, some pedestrian planning recently, and so these maps reflect that, uh, that efforts, uh, those efforts. So Terriban, uh, on the left, there's a number of, of sidewalk improvement projects planned along the 11th Street corridor, and then east-west, um, along Smith Rock Way, B Avenue, I believe is that east-west road. Um, and then some high priority projects in Tumalo, um, that are between the highway um, and the Tumalo core. Um, so those are great opportunities, uh, for projects there to support some of the infrastructure that's going to be constructed in Tumalo with the new roundabout going in. Um, so some great projects to help people walking within both Tumalo and Terriban. Uh, and then bicycle facilities, this is on page 24 of the memo. This is a really, uh, exciting addition to the TSP that I mentioned before BPAC has been involved with. And this, uh, this is a section that describes, um, community connections that should be, um, looked at through, uh, through the, uh, future planning. Um, and this is a good example, again, of where the county TSP serves the role of identifying connections that, that could be made, uh, but then acknowledging also that the actual ownership and construction of that, um, in many of these cases will likely occur through partnerships with other agencies, through either construction or ownership maintenance of those facilities going forward. So what you see on the screen here is a list of the high priority community connections that should be further explored and then routes identified. Um, so the first as an example, Bend to Redmond is an, is an important corridor to find a way for people biking between those communities to have a route um, that's serviceable for those trips. Um, so what happens on, in this table, um, is we identify that route, Bend to Redmond, and then generally describe, um, how that route could be achieved. Um, so in this case, um, obviously that would happen largely within ODOT right-of-way, most realistically. Um, and then we make clear that the, the actual route, um, will be subject to further refinement and design in the future. Um, so a number of, of ra- of connections identified here, Bend to Redmond, Bend to Sun River, Bend to Sisters, Sis- Redmond to Sisters, and so on. You, you get the idea of these are routes that would connect communities and key destinations within the county. There's also one that's not listed on here, which is more of a recreational list that we have, and the high priority list there, um, is Bend to Cascade Lakes Highway, which is actually identified through, um, a county planning process, um, as well. So, um, this is really, I think, a, a first step of a lot of efforts that, um, that will happen within the county, and the county TSP will help frame those up, um, as a, as a place for, um, for further discussion and refinement in the future. Questions on that? Yeah.
Yes, I have a quick question, Commissioner Swisher. Um, are these bicycle facilities all paved? I mean, or what kind of surface are you talking about in these paths?
Well, that's a really good example of what, of what we don't know yet. So a lot of these are concepts of routes, but there's no specific alignment identified. So, uh, in some of the cases that, and BPAC has an extensive document where they've thought through some possibilities, um, which is a great starting place, but, you know, is it an off, off, uh, street trail? Is it something that would utilize a shoulder? Those are questions that for many of these, um, routes, we just don't know the answers to yet, so we're not being specific on that, but certainly lots of opportunities to explore and build off BPAC's great work.
Thank you.
Okay, let me keep going. Um, bridge projects, um, are also listed. These are not necessarily the things that get a lot of excitement, but are important for a bridge to work and operate well. Um, so there's a number of, of bridge projects here that are, are, are maintenance projects to maintain these important, um, facilities, um, crossing canals or other things. So Smith Rock Way are some, um, i- is one high priority project, so this is part of the regular county efforts to maintain these facilities within, uh, on the county system. Um, and then, uh, a couple of FLAP projects. So FLAP stands for Federal Lands Access Program, um, and that's a federal program that's intended to, um, fund projects that improve access to federal lands. Um, and if you're not already familiar with this program, it's a, it's a great pro- program for Deschutes County because we have lots of federal lands. So the county has a number of projects identified that you, that are eligible for such funds, um, and those are shown on the map here on the right. Um, the high priority project is a improvement project on Three Creeks Road near Sisters, just south of Sisters, and largely the, the county projects identifies, um, projects that would upgrade or reconstruct roads to, to make sure that these roads maintain that service to these federal lands, um, that we all enjoy so much. Um, I mentioned before transit facilities, and, um, as, as I'm sure you all know, transit is not, um, a major driver of, of access for people within the county, but it does have, um, a big impact for people that rely on it with dial-a-ride and other, other, um, other features of the system like that. Um, there's also other transit providers that operate within the county or through the county. So the TSP will adopt Cascades East recently updated Transit Master Plan into the TSP by reference, and that document does a great job of providing details about the existing service and how that service might expand, including within the unincorporated areas of the county. So this is a good, um, example of the partnership that the county has with some of these other transportation service providers. Um, and then Peter mentioned before, and I also mentioned the, the Transportation Safety Action Plan. This is a specific transportation, um, plan focused on safety and s- improving safety outcomes within the county. Within that document was a number of project, uh, projects that were identified that focused on the high, um, priority areas based on observed crashes and what we're seeing in the, in the community. Um, so those projects are listed, this on page 33 of the memo. Um, so we, we had the luxury of a lot of great safety work being ready to go and incorporated, and that, the TSAP itself will also be maintained and updated, so that's, um, another great source of, of projects over, over time um, for, um, identifying how we can reduce severe and, and fatal crashes within the community. Um, so that's a, a really fast overview of what I mentioned was 100 projects, so obviously there's lots of great, of great projects planned. Um, so what we're doing next is obviously looking to this, this commission for input and feedback on what you're hearing tonight and what you've reviewed. Um, we're also going to be, um, in the late winter here, potentially early spring, having another public open house where we make these projects, um, lists available to the community for their feedback on, on what they support or what we might have missed. Um, also, regular coordination with our agency partners, particularly focusing on how the county system, um, supports and is, in, in, um, and works with the urban edges of these communities, Sisters, Bend, Redmond, La Pine. Um, that's an important part of the county planning is to make sure that, 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 that those, those two systems make sense with each other. Um, and then looking at the funding needs, uh, of, of these projects. How do we pay for the 185 million we've identified and additional funding we might need to support other priorities for the county? Um, and how that relates to the existing roadway moratorium policy? Um, and, and really just making clear the funding over the next 20 years, um, as best we can at this stage. And then, in the not-too-distant future, drafting the, the next version of that Transportation System Plan, which will largely incorporate this material that you're seeing today and some of the other policies that are out there that we've been working on. So, um, I'll stop there, um, see if there's additional, uh, questions or discussion that we can, um, address tonight.
Steve Swisher, I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner Swisher, please.
This question might be better directed at Peter Russell or Peter Gatausky, but you perhaps can answer this. The county's waiting on ODOT about a grant regarding the Sisters Trail System as part of that update to the transportation plan. I'm wondering how that interfaces with this entire transportation plan? That's part of it at some point, or it's a totally separate thing? Or how does that, how does that interface?
So it's Peter Russell. I'll spare Matt all the Byzantine stuff that we have, but essentially, we have received a notice to proceed. Kittleson is also the firm working on the Transportation Growth Management Grant, which will look at the rural trails in the Sisters area, as well as updating the bike, bed, and transit element of the Tumalo Community Plan. So these two projects will mesh together. Technically, the Tumalo Community Plan is a subset of the Comprehensive Plan, but that's just, you know, only, only the planning geeks are going to care about that. So essentially, the two documents will work in tandem to make sure that bike, bed, and trails are addressed in the TSP and then whether we need to do any policy language changes or not. So we're just, we're in the super early stages of starting the TGM program. We're just now working with Kittleson on the, the timeline for how we're going to do this and it'll have public outreach and whatnot. So we finally got the, the go signal and, and we're going.
Thank you, Peter.
Are there other questions, comments? I'm not seeing any other questions or comments at this time.
I'd like to see those glasses on Doty again.
Do you have any other comments?
No, we don't, we don't have a final decision tonight. This was just to bring you, you know, where we are at the moment. What we'll also do is we'll be back periodically at milestones on both the Tumalo Community Plan, as well as the Transportation System Plan. And then when we get the final draft, of course, we'll have formally noticed public hearings where you'll take public testimony and then make a recommendation to the board.
Thank you. It's always helpful to have the context of where each thing fits in these longer projects. So I appreciate that.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I just want to thank the Planning Commission for staying engaged. You've got a special role in this process, kind of throughout, but mostly there towards the end as, as the projects get identified. You're a very geographically diverse group and relying on that geographic diversity to kind of, you know, check our, our work as we present this to the community.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, so let's now move to Planning Commission and staff comments. Let's see, I think we'll go ahead and start with Peter Gatausky. Do you have any staff comments tonight?
Thank you, Chair Kieris and members of the Planning Commission. I do have a couple of comments. One is just letting the Planning Commission know where we are in filling the vacancy for the at-large position vacated by Les Hudson. Commissioner Kieris and I are going to be joining Commissioners Chang and Commissioners, Commissioner Adair on March 1st. Commissioner Kieris and I will each be with one of the board members, to be determined. And anyway, we're going to interview six candidates on March 1st. And I greatly appreciate the coordination with the Chair Kieris on, we, we had the opportunity to, with the board's direction, we had 12 candidates for the at-large position. Highly, highly competent and diverse candidates. We, we narrowed them down to six and we have a very diverse group that will, will be engaging not only us, but the two county commissioners. And anyway, that process will continue. We'll see if there's consensus. And to the extent that there's not, I'll work with the board and administration to figure out next steps. So again, Chair Kieris, thank you for the coordination that we've had over the last several days. Secondly, I just wanted to give a legislative update on, on the bills that CDD is tracking. I did send, I thought I sent the, the Planning Commission an update on Senate Bill 1533. That's, has, that is containing a patch to correct broken links related to Senate Bill 391 and the rural accessory dwelling unit. Legislation to clarify defensible space provisions that are going to be determined by the state fire marshal at the end of this calendar year. There was, as you may recall, there was a broken link referenced in Senate Bill 762 related to wildfire mitigation. In any event, it looks like Senate Bill 1533 is going to get adopted by the legislature. It went through committee. It had a second reading today with the Senate, and it's on its way to get a third reading next week. Another one is just keeping you informed about House Bill 4051. This is a bill currently structured for studying some of our housing challenges. We've been made aware that it may be a gut and stuff for other housing-related matters affecting Oregon. There's nothing that's been added to date, but is something that I'm, I'm tracking. Lastly, on the legislative front is House Bill 4064. This also came out of committee, a House Committee on Housing, related to deciding of prefabricated structures. And the bill basically prevents local governments from prohibiting these kind of prefabricated, manufactured home-like structures. Anywhere a single-family dwelling is allowed in the zone, under this bill, House Bill 4064, prefabricated structures would be allowed as well, with no other specifications or requirements. That one has, has broad support. The last thing that I'll, I'll share with you is, and happy to discuss it if you want to at a, at another meeting, but I did forward the Planning Commission an, an email from an attorney this evening from Brian Sheets, who is expressing concerns about the, the piping of the Flume and Canal in the Arnold Irrigation District. Just a heads up that it's in your inbox, in your email. And if you have questions about that, I'm certainly, Will and I can certainly talk about that at a subsequent meeting under, under this agenda item. You're also welcome individually if you want to reach out to any one of us to, to provide further context. The last comment I would make is just letting, I think you're all aware that the state of Oregon is going to be removing its mass mandates or requirements at the end of March. I anticipate that the Board of County Commissioners is going to embrace in-person meetings and without any kind of spatial or, or seating limitations. I just want to share with you that from CDD's standpoint, we, we will welcome whatever approach the Planning Commission wants to take moving forward. Zoom meetings, I think, are, still are very effective. Obviously, we miss seeing all of you in person. It's been a long time, but I want to share with you that from a department standpoint, we will look to you individually to determine when you feel it's appropriate to meet in person. And when that date does happen at some point in the future and we have a quorum that we'll be attending in, in person, of course, we will reinstitute dinner like we did pre, pre-COVID. So anyway, the point being is I just want to underscore that we respect, we want to respect each Planning Commissioner's own circumstances and comfort level as we, knock on wood, find ourselves getting further and further away from the volatility of this pandemic. So thank you, Madam Chair. That, that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Peter. Are there other staff present who would like to make comments? I can only see you, so I can't see who else is still here and if they would like to make comments.
Good evening, Madam Chair. This is Will Groves, your Planning Manager. I've got with me this evening Kyle Collins, who I'd like to allow him to make some comments with your, at your discretion, and then I have some to follow up.
Excellent. Let's go to Kyle Collins next.
Good evening, Commissioners. Kyle Collins, Associate Planner. I just wanted to provide a brief update on the water panel discussions. The Commissioners will think back several weeks ago. Staff has elected with the Planning Commission's support to put together kind of a two-part educational series on water resources in the area. A lot of this is intended to prime the Commissioners in anticipation for the Comprehensive Plan update that's going to kick off a little bit later this year. The first of those panels is going to take place in your next meeting this month on the 24th. We have three panelists slated for that particular date. Dr. Stephen Gingrich with the U.S. Geologic Survey, Kyle Gorman of the Oregon Water Resources Department, and finally, Bridget Moran of the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. I've had some email communication with Chair Kieris regarding topics that I believe the Planning Commissioners have expressed interest in hearing specific details about. And I've provided some of those recommendations, as well as some staff interpretation to each of those three panelists. To, to give kind of an overview of what this first panel is going to be discussing, it's primarily related to what I would call the scientific background on water resources within our region, as well as some of the legal and administrative issues dealing with water resources. So everything from permitting of surface water rights, groundwater rights, and how that process actually happens at both the state and local level. The second of the two water panels is going to be slated for an April Planning Commission meeting. There's a bit of a gap due to some scheduling issues, but that second meeting is going to be focused a little bit more on user group perspectives within Deschutes County and how they interface with water resources. So the irrigation districts, local farmer perspectives, people of that nature. And with that, I can open it up to any, any questions from the Commissioners at this point if they have them.
Any questions, anyone? Okay. Any more comments, Kyle?
That's all for me.
Okay, great. Let's go to Will Groves then.
Good evening, Commissioners. So I have a few things for your attention and update. I wanted to let you know that we had proceeded in that Rural Economic Development Panel with the High Desert Food and Farm Alliance, coming out of your discussions with them and moving forward to the board. We coordinated with them on opportunities for future improvements to codes and process. And as part of those discussions, Katrina, we spoke to Katrina specifically and came to an agreement that those would best be addressed as part of the Comprehensive Plan Updates, that there were not immediate and obvious code updates that would benefit their farmers in relationship to what was allowed under state law. And so we would revisit those issues under the Comprehensive Plan. The second issue I have for you is this evening is that you heard about the Transportation and Growth Management Plan Grant that's being kicked off with regard to Sisters Trail and the Tumalo Community Plan. And so in regard to the Tumalo Community Plan aspect of that, it's important to remember that there's both a transportation element, which is focusing on bike, bed, and transit enhancements that you heard about this evening. Peter Russell spoke to that. But we're also engaging in a major, major outreach to the community to do a, a decadal update in their community plan. So we're at the very beginning stages of that, beginning to craft that outreach, start to think about a website, and then over the course of the next year, reach out to the community and do a broad engagement with them into how they would like to see Tumalo work and, and grow in the future. So just letting you know that we're at the very beginning of that project. We've been stuck on the wrong side of the starting line a long time, waiting for some grant money, and now we're, and now we've heard that starting gun and are off at the races, and you'll be hearing more about that in the future. Speaking to Off of the Races with regard to the Deschutes County Comprehensive Plan Update, we're doing interviews with consultants on the 24th and 25th of this month. There were three consultants that provided proposals in response to our RFP, and all three of them met the sufficient quality to proceed to interview. So we'll be interviewing each of those, selecting a finalist, and proceeding to negotiations for those services. So we're really excited to get that major project underway. Finally, Peter Gatausky alleged, got to some of this issue. We continue to be experiencing significant shortfalls in staffing in the planning and both long-range and current planning departments. Luckily, our most recent recruitment effort seems promising. We're hoping to bring on three current planners, which is the largest number of people we brought on at any time. And those of you who have recruited and trained staff know that hiring people seems like it's going to make things better right away, but in fact, you're down, not just the three people you were down, but you're down a number of staff to train them. So we're going to see a real resource pinch coming into the future, and both Kyle and Tarek have been so generous as to help out in their former capacity as current planners keeping us afloat. So we're, we're in an unusual resource pinch and see that continuing for the next few months. So your patience as we, as we survive that is very much appreciated. And with that, I'm available for any questions or comments you may have.
Any questions or comments for Will Groves? Okay, so we'll move on to Planning Commissioner comments or announcements. Commissioner Swisher?
Yes, this comments for you, Chair Kieris, as well as Peter Gatausky, our Director. And that is my term on the Planning Commission, the eight years is up on June 30th. So the Planning Commission will be going through another process of leadership to determine who might replace me. And so I would encourage you to keep your eye on the people that you're currently interviewing for the at-large position, because there may be some that end up not being selected but actually live in Sisters Country, I represent that particular part, that you would want to encourage to make sure that they stay engaged and apply when the Sisters Country position comes open. So the planning, you, the Planning Director, as well as the two county commissioners, may want to just kind of keep aware of that so that you're on the lookout for good candidates for my replacement.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Swisher. We're going to be super sad to see you go. It's going to be a rough time, but we'll, we'll be okay.
Well, as the school board always, I used to say about them, they were always with me, two to one in three abstentions. So I appreciate the nice comments, but you know, there's always mixed reviews.
Okay, are there other Commissioner remarks, comments, announcements? Okay, thanks, everyone. This was a great evening, and we made it work. And three minutes before the top of the hour at 8:57, I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting.